Okay, let's open the meeting. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its
Good evening, everyone. And first on our agenda, it's my pleasure to introduce Representative David Meridian.
Well, thank you, Chair. Hello, to you, Lord. It is a pleasure to sit in front of the board and hello to the many, many people I'm sure tuning in at home on live streaming. I appreciate the opportunity to come in, give you a will probably be a fairly quick update about the governor's budget. We don't have our House budget quite yet. We're just a couple of weeks away from it. But basically, so just a quick rundown is the governor released our budget back in January. From then, the Ways and Means Committee, so then it comes to the House. And our budget's going to be the last week in April. What happens is our budget will be released the second week of April on Wednesday traditionally, and then we are given the bill Friday at 5:00 PM to file amendments. So it's a very narrow timeframe, but even in that narrow timeframe, you're going to see somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,200, 1,400 amendments filed. So we need to know kind of the line items, where we're looking, things of that nature. We'll have basically school vacation week to go through it, start looking at the amendments. We'll get hundreds of emails a day in terms of cosquons during amendments. I try to personally go through them all. Sometimes I can get my eyes on the amendments. Sometimes it takes a little bit of time. I try to make sure I give it the personal due diligence that I think everyone reaching out deserves. So then the last week in April, we will go and we will debate the budget. Traditionally, we'll debate it on Monday. This year, given Passover, we're actually going to start on Wednesday. So while we typically wrap up Wednesday or Thursday, we'll probably start Saturday. Very similar to what we're doing in April, the Senate will do in May with the beginning, the second week in May, them producing a budget, their Ways and Means Committee doing that, them having the same amount of time to review it, file amendments, things of that nature. And then the last full week in May, they will do their budget. After that, goes to a conference committee. So any bill that the legislature does, if there's a discrepancy between the House and the Senate, whether it's a dollar difference, whether it's a period to a comma, goes to a conference committee. It's three members of the House, it's three members of the Senate, two from the majority party, one from the minority on both sides, and then they'll hash out any of the differences. If we're fortunate enough to secure an earmark and say, they said a counterpart secures a different number. That number could be our number, it could be their number, it could be somewhere in the middle, or it could be completely different. So it's ultimately up to what the conference committee puts together for their budget. I mean this the most respectful way as possible, and I said it to the previous governor. I'll say for this governor, the budget that's out there right now isn't worth the paper that it's printed on. Ultimately, it comes down to us to run through, and then the Senate, and then that ultimately, once that conference committee budget is agreed upon, we vote again, up or down. We cannot amend it at that point. And then that then goes to the governor's desk, where the governor will have ten days to sign it, we'll send it back. The very frustrating thing is traditionally, I don't know if it coincides with my tenure in the legislature or not, but we've been one of the last states in the country to actually get budgets ratified in the last couple of years, which makes your jobs very different. I understand that. It makes FinCom's job difficult. Us in the minority party, we tried to push for early local aid resolutions, early Chapter 9 resolutions, early Chapter 70. So at least you have a ballpark. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to get that over the finish line, but we keep trying to fight for that. I will fairly quickly just go into the biggest stuff, the Chapter 70, the HOGA, unrestricted general government aid, and amended Optin numbers. Chapter 70 for Optin traditionally stays the same because you actually see that number in the school district. So that's $39,979. Governor's budget, it's basically been the same for many years, so I would anticipate the House staying there as well. HOGA, again, unrestricted general government aid. This budget is $655,574. And amended Optin School District, it'd be $12,817,396. The quick math is that that's a $59,310 increase for amended Optin and $19,094 for HOGA. If you ask me, those numbers are a slap in the face to our districts. I'm pretty perturbed that the administration would take that sort of stance in terms of Chapter 70, especially HOGA. I mean, HOGA goes a long way in terms of our communities, especially the smaller communities like Optin. You have my commitment to fight to try to increase for our pupil. Last year, I was the chief sponsor in amendment to try to raise the Chapter 70 per pupil number to $100 per pupil. While it was a lofty goal, we weren't able to quite get it there. The legislature did agree on $60, so that typically comes out at $30. That was a double increase. The numbers that you have that I just ran through are only in the governor's budget, so it remains to be seen what we do. That being said, the state is hemorrhaging dollars. Our budget projections have basically been in the tank for month over month over month. We're not meeting our benchmarks, our goals. We did a revised set of numbers. We're still not hitting those numbers. So it's going to be a very lean budget. It'll probably be a lean couple of years. Some would say that it's from our dollars drying up. Some would say that we had such a good run for the last couple of years, even given COVID, that, you know, we're ultimately going to fall a little bit off that cliff. The job for us as legislators is to make sure that we don't absolutely plummet. So you have my commitment to try to all I can to bring local dollars back. I've worked with Joe to try to get a couple of the local suggestions for earmarks that we're going to be filing. I sat with the Chair of Ways and Means last week. That made him aware of our priorities. But there's no guarantees to anything, and I want to be unbelievably realistic and unbelievably clear with that. That while we've been very successful in the past of securing local earmarks and local dollars, it's going to be dark. But that doesn't mean that I'm going to stop. I'm going to keep trying to plod forward. And obviously, I appreciate hearing from all of you and obviously any of the residents here watching at home. And I'll try to do all I can to secure local funding. I will leave you, before I wrap up my very long-winded remarks, I will leave you with this. If there are any grant opportunities that the town pursues, any of them, please let me know, whether it's from the Select Board, whether it's from department heads, whether it's from the town manager. You have to let us know. Myself and Senator Fattman will certainly lend our support. And as you can imagine, when the budget is not looking all that rosy, any sort of grant funding that we can secure is a wonderful addition. So I will be happy to fight as long as I'm aware of it. So that being said, Madam Chair, I will turn it back over to you and this in Borg.
Appreciate the update.
Absolutely.
Takeout to let us know what's going on. Do you foresee any proposed cuts in the governor's budget?
So the interesting thing is, we did a supplemental budget back in November, so over $3 billion. There's a lot of like tidying up the books. There were contracts that had to be signed, things of that nature. Became a little bit of a political football for a whole host of reasons. But one of them, which is the fortunate reality that we all in Massachusetts have to deal with, is the migrant crisis. And so from that, we put $250 million there. About a month after, the administration ended up using NC, so Chapter NC authority to cut $375 million in certain funds, one of those being a local public safety earmark that myself and the Senator were able to secure. So it's really difficult when you're seeing us being a right-to-shelter state and we have to provide. But what I believe the law was originally intended for and what it's being utilized for now is vastly different. So it's quite frustrating when we secure funding directly for Optin, for our public safety officials, who do such a good job, to see that money go out the window is really, really difficult. The migrant crisis is a crisis. It is a humanitarian crisis, first and foremost. But very soon thereafter, it becomes a political football, where we've heard our governors say that our federal delegation has to do more. The unfortunate reality is our US senators both voted against funding very recently that would have come back to help our state provide. So until we have revenue stream, which I just finished telling you, our budget's not looking all that well. We're looking at a projected $1 billion to cover the migrant crisis for this upcoming fiscal year. Those dollars have to come from somewhere, given the right-to-shelter law being what it is right now. It's going to have to come from, you know, unfortunately, potentially our line items. That being said, we have moved to try to change some of the right-to-shelter things of that nature, try to put some requirements, residency requirements in place. We tried for a year. We tried for six months. We tried for three months. Unfortunately, the majority party didn't think kindly of those, and so they were shot down largely on party line votes. But that being said, the way that I read the law right now, if someone came from New Hampshire tomorrow and just decided to move from New Hampshire, New Mexico, or New Zealand, we would have to take care of them. And those dollars have to come from somewhere. So it ties our hands a bit. It makes our job very, very frustratingly difficult, especially given the fact that a lot of the communities, I know Optin doesn't necessarily have hotel rooms, but a lot of the communities that have hotels that are partnering with the state aren't even aware of when migrants are going to be placed in their communities. So all of a sudden, we saw just down the street in Optin, 146, that within a day or so of notice, they had a whole hotel full of people. Now you'd have to tax all, you know, you're taxing on all the school departments and all the teachers, you're trying to get, you know, instructors and tutors and things of that nature. It becomes a really, really, really frustrating predicament for any community. So that's taking up a lot of the area. So I guess that's a very long way of answering your question of, I'm not sure what's going to come down the pipeline. You know, hopefully, there's no additional cuts that need to happen. I can't speak for the governor, for this administration. I can speak for myself and telling you that I'm going to try to do all I can to secure local funding.
And I believe you will. And I thank you for all the hard work you do and all the towns you represent. And I'm glad you're running again.
I am, yes. Thank you. I would have been on the ballot come the primary in the Senate. So thank you.
I hope so. Thank you so much, David.
Appreciate that.
No questions, but we appreciate you were part. I mean, we realize that. We appreciate it.
I second all of those comments. Just a couple sort of like logistics questions. I'm not sure if we know the answer to this or can get the answer offline, but like the big things we've got right now that I think are on the docket from a state funding perspective, like the TIP project, the MassWorks project, the Grove Street Bridge, like, does that funding potentially get affected? Do those projects potentially get delayed? I mean, I would assume the answer is yes, and we just don't know yet. But I thought I would ask, because I don't literally know like the mechanics of what is and isn't potentially impacted by this stuff.
Without diving into the line items, I would say anything's on the table.
Okay.
That being said, I know that, you know, we push for a whole bucket of money for MassWorks every year.
Yeah.
And we feel the benefits of it.
Sure do.
All the gentlemen chatting about it. But, you know, I would think honestly, if the revenue projections continue to trend the wrong way.
Yeah.
I would say anything's on the table.
Fair.
Obviously, NC gives us the authority to go back and claw funds from anything under the administrative side of things, executive branch, but that's kind of where we're at. You know, I wish I could tell you, no, there's certain things.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, I know, can't like protect them. I just didn't know. So it's so, and I would think with stuff like the, with the 140 TIP project, right, it's not a question of canceling or not doing it. It's more like, does everything sort of just slow down? So their projects slow down. So instead of starting in 2025, now maybe it's 2028, or I have no idea. It's speculation.
Urgency priority that might come up, you know, there's no telling what will come down the pipeline, whether it's Optin-based or any other community.
Yeah.
And so it's a little bit of a sliding scale there, but trust me, it's not lost on me how hard we have worked to get to this point, and I'm not going to drop the ball on that.
Yeah. Anything we can do to help, let us know.
Absolutely. Me too, please.
Same. We're team.
Thank you, David. It was a pleasure.
Absolutely. And again, if you need anything, I have a phone call, a Facebook message, an email, a text away. I'm always accessible to all of you, so please don't hesitate to reach.
All right, final question.
Yeah, you got it.
You're on camera, so you have to be careful with this one. How is it working with your new colleague, Senator Fattman?
It's always worked well. So Ryan and I went to Sutton together, played basketball together. We're teammates. We're teammates then, we're teammates now.
Awesome.
So I was two years older than him.
Yeah.
Really good basketball team. We really did. We won one game our senior year. That was the last game that we played. It was the state semifinals against St. Joseph's. This is like my Al Bundy moment.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, Ryan and I are in constant contact with each other.
Good.
I'm fortunate that I had such a good working relationship with Senator Moore.
Yeah.
And I had such a good working relationship with Senator Fattman. And more so than even the working relationship, I can say they're both friends.
Yeah, that's great.
And so, you know, the unfortunate thing is in politics, sometimes people let, you know, a party or a disagreement get in the way of moving forward, and you'll never see that with me.
Yeah.
I'm trying to do the best I can for the entirety of my district, and that's working with everyone. Try to move all forward.
Same. Great. Awesome. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
See you later.
Thank you so much.
Have a great night.
Chair, real pleasure.
Same. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, great to see you. See you later.
And next on the agenda is the Upton Community Food Pantry update, Social Services Coordinator. She's long. Oh, there she is.
Here I am.
Thank you, Tanya.
I got the pleasure of being here virtually tonight, so thank you for having me. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Katie San Clemente. I am the Social Services Coordinator for the town of Upton. And I'm hoping to give you all an update on the Upton Community Center food pantry tonight. So a little bit of background, the food pantry opened in October of this past year, so we've been open just under six months. We are located in the new community center, and that houses the library and the senior center. So we are serving the community as a whole. We serve residents of all ages, races, anything, anyone that comes to us and needs help, we are there to support them. Currently, we are staffed by two volunteer coordinators. We are open two days a week, Wednesdays from 12 to 2, and Fridays from 11 to 1. So the volunteer coordinators are there those two days a week for those two hours. And we are also available, staff members can help residents who come in or need to make an appointment and need support. So most of the time, as long as we're open, someone is there to help if someone is in need. But we do suggest that people come during those two opening times. It just helps us track everyone and things like that. Right now, we are tracking residents on our My Senior Center program. So when they do come to visit us, they sign in just so we can track how many people are coming to the food pantry and how many people we are servicing. It will also help us see if there are additional days or times that we need to be open to serve more people in need. I would say right now, we are seeing about 35 people a month. That would be about our average. So right now, now that I'm coming back from my maternity leave, I'm working on gathering more resources so that we can reach more residents in town. So that's been something that we've been working on with our volunteer coordinators and with our new director, Tanya. So we're trying to just get more people out into our food pantry to assist them. And we're doing a few different things. So we just started a new Facebook page. We know that a lot of younger adults are on Facebook, so that's something that we just started a couple of weeks ago. And I'm already seeing some good traction with that. So the Facebook page holds a few different purposes right now. We're able to let people know what hours we're open through the Facebook page, so that more people know that we exist and they can come to us during those hours. But also, we're able to let organizations and people in town who want to donate know what we're looking for and what we're in need of. So we're hoping that not only does it reach people who are in need of our services, but it's also reaching out to people who may want to donate or work with us to help fund the food pantry and get us stocked. Right now, our stock is pretty good. We've had some great donations come in from a variety of organizations. I know Eric, he donated to us back before the holidays. We had a donation come in from the Upton VFW, which was really great. And we've just had various residents donate over the last few months that have been really helpful. So right now, we're in a really good place, and we're just hoping to continue stocking and continue reaching out to different people in town. A few things that we're hoping to be able to do are reaching out to some members in the school systems and also reaching out to the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts to work with them for donations. I know that Upton Men's Club have been reaching out, so we're hoping to just grab from all angles. And I think it's kind of twofold right now. We're hoping to get more people in the door, and we're also hoping to work with more organizations in town to get that support and get those resources to help more people. So kind of two pieces that we're working with. We're really happy with the way things have been going over the last six months. We're very pleased with the numbers, and people are really happy that our services are there. And we're just hoping that we can get more people in the door, because I know that they're out there. Another great thing that we are really thankful for is when people come in the doors, we're also able to provide additional services other than just the food pantry. So something that I typically do in my day-to-day job is helping with various applications for state and federal assistance programs, like SNAP food stamps, fuel assistance, housing. And so a lot of the population of people who come in for the food pantry are also in need of those services. So they're getting in the door, they're meeting me, we're getting face-to-face. They come see the department, they see the community center. So it really is such a great service that we're offering in town. And we've also been able to build relationships with the other two food pantries in town, with United Parish and with St. Gabriel's, to collaborate and share what works and what doesn't work. And it's just overall been a really great experience. So we're hoping that in the next six months, we'll be able to grow even more and reach more community members who may be in need. And we're just really thankful that we've had this opportunity to open up at the community center and help more residents in town.
Thank you so much, Katie. Any questions? Are there any specific items the food pantry needs? Do you need, are you stocked well with food, but you need toiletries, or since you have us here?
Yeah, I mean, we, my goal is to get a month-to-month list up on that Facebook page and to post it around town as we get to that point. Right now, we, we're stocked pretty well. It's just keeping up with the things that are really popular, cereal, peanut butter. Those were two things I noticed today that we need to go out and get. So we're able to use the monetary donations to go out and shop for ourselves, which is great, but we also accept anything that comes in as donations, and we just try to keep a running list. So right now, we're accepting anything. Nothing is overstocked, so we're thankful for anything that comes in, really.
Nice to see you, Katie.
You too.
Welcome back. How's the baby?
He's very good. He's a very big boy.
Well, look forward to meeting him. This brings to mind a couple of things, opportunities. One is, and this is probably more a question for Joe and/or, I'm not sure, the best way to do it. I've always thought it would be helpful to communicate to the community the existence of that trust to help people in need. And I know we've done different things, like we did the neighbor-to-neighbor during COVID. So we've got a lot of stuff up there, but literally just in terms of like almost an information campaign, like you mentioned, and what made me think of it was you mentioned sort of starting Facebook for the food pantry. So I wonder, is there an opportunity, or what would be a good venue, or can you sort of put on our list of things to do at some point when someone because I know we're all busy and have day jobs, like an article either in the paper or on Facebook pages, or something that literally talks about the existence of the program and how the program works, just to like spread the word. Because I was talking with someone about one of the trusts, the beautification trust, and like, obviously, people just don't know about it. It's hard to get the information out there. But I think that's also true, and you know this, of the the trust to help families in need. So that's just a thought question. If you could put that on the list of
Yeah, I think.
something, do something at some point to just advertise, get the word out about that existence of that.
That's, that's a good, I think, a good opportunity to have a discussion involving Katie and Tanya. Very often, they're the ones that are interacting with the community, is being able to identify the need. Food pantry is an opportunity to meet people and to interact and find if there's a greater need there, why they may be there. We've, we've talked about developing special programs like around heating, heating oil assistance, you know, things where the welfare trust funds could be a stopgap between some of the programs, and also lack of responsiveness sometimes in some of these programs. So I think that would be a good opportunity to sort of gather rounds or brainstorm, think about how all that work, that works in addition to how can you communicate that out, and it's worth like what general parameters can we put? Because we have a lot of funds, but we also have an amount of
I totally hear what you're saying, right? There's, there's always concern of people sort of abusing the system or us having money distributed in a way that's irresponsible or out of control or not, not monitored and all that. My, my position has been for years and will continue to be that our problem isn't people taking advantage of the program. Our problem is people not knowing about the program. So if people know about the program and we can start helping more people, and we all share a concern and a responsibility to make sure that this program's not abused, we can monitor how the program is used. We, right, so it's like, we don't have a problem with people asking and asking for help and taking advantage of the help or using it inappropriately. We have a problem of, we have $650,000 in a trust fund that was set up privately by a private family to help private citizens in Upton that need help. We are simply the stewards of that as a select board. It's not taxpayers' money. So yes, we have a responsibility, but it's not our money, right? And so my view continues to be, we do not do a good job of advertising, promoting, and helping people be aware of that. If everyone in Upton knew about that program and how it worked, including all you have to go through a review, you have to work with social services to, you know, show your financial status and your financial position. It's not just like a freebie giveaway, like you've got to be willing to put something into it to prove that you need the funds. But if everybody in Upton knew that, we could all look out for each other to point people to get the help when they need it, and all be transparent and keep each other accountable to make sure that nobody's taking advantage of the system. So I think we can do all of those things. A simple article to tell people what it is and that it exists will help us. I know it's going to create some overhead, because if more people get involved, but we can solve that problem. If we don't, if we need more support or help to administer the program, we can solve that problem. If we're worried about people taking advantage of the program, we can solve that problem. The problem we have right now before us is a lack of awareness because of the historic fear of those problems. And so we need to push through that to get to the next. My two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me the floor, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much for the information, Katie.
Of course.
Thank you. Good luck.
Coffee, jealous.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the MBTA Communities Execution of the Contract, Mr. Antonellis.
Hello.
Hello.
Mike Antonellis, Director of Land Use and Inspeccional Services. So as you may be aware, I received on behalf of the town a grant that secured $30,000 worth of funds for the express purpose of engaging a consultant to conduct an economic feasibility analysis that would assist us with the compliance with MBTA communities. That plus, you know, I also applied for technical assistance with just preparation and in particular, RKG, we're recommending that we go with. They updated their scope to include a lot of public outreach. In discussion with the Planning Board Chair, I think it's on the, yeah, she is. In discussion with the Planning Board Chair, she felt, and I agreed, that it, that's an important component. Obviously, the MBTA communities is engaging, obviously, citizens in it and getting the information out there. So they included that within their scope. They were, I mean, they are premier consultant agency, you know, they are. So the expertise are there, staff expertise are there, the experience is there. I believe they were also the cheapest for quoting us on the technical side of things. And then obviously, they maxed out the expenditure of the grant funds because that is what's required, that's what we need them for. So it's my recommendation that if the support would like to execute or give Joe the authorization to execute on that contract. I believe we're getting the most experienced professional and the biggest bang for a buck, really, to, to, to get the economic feasibility analysis side of things on the quote that they provided. Plus the remainder invested into, under my direction, technical assistance, which are technical components of compliance, but also, like I mentioned, the most important thing being the outreach.
I approve the contract. They're impressive. Excellent. No, I agree. They were very impressive and like you said, I think it's the biggest thing for the buck. Well worth the money.
Right? I'm going to get brought, brought out of it. No questions?
Okay, I will take a motion to approve the contract.
I move that the board vote for all, as a town manager, to finalize and execute the contract with RKG in the amount of $29,490 for professional services for an economic feasibility analysis related to Section 3A of Chapter 48 of the MBTA Communities.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous action. Next to the town managers.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Not playing games on my phone. It's a phone. I'm looking at the meeting again. It's packing because it won't load on my laptop.
So for, for updates for the town and for anyone watching, our, here in, in the meeting room. These are also on the town website under the town manager page for news and, and updates. So back on March 5th, we have a state primary election. Turnout was 32% of those who voted. 51% of those voted on Election Day in person and 49% voted either by mail or voted early. Also today was the deadline for submitting nomination papers. And recently, we launched the No Solicitation Registry webpage. And you can go to the town's website under news and announcements and find the link. So far, 283 people have registered on that No Solicitation Registry. Applications for the town of Upton Annual Scholarship are now available on the town's website. Complete applications must be returned to the select board's town manager's office by noon on April 25th. Again, you can go to the news announcements on the town's website for the link for the scholarship application page. On April 2nd, staff is going to be holding a informational meeting here in this room for reviewing current parking, pedestrian accommodations as part of the 140 Main Street Tip Project. Primarily focused on parking, the sidewalk improvements and the roundabout that would be part of that project. So basically from the Ottawa Fair Shop up to the community center, looking at specifically those areas. We're going to send notices to people who live in that area as well as the participants who attended last year's 25% design hearing. The Conservation Commission has issued orders and conditions for both Grove Street and the Milford Road Water Sewer Extension Project. That water sewer extension project is what was funded through the Massworks Grant. We received two rounds of funding, one for engineering and then one for construction. We're actually starting to pull together those items to allow us to go out to construction and setting up some last, and then meetings with the developer of Governor's Landing in order to go over specifics, make sure we're all on the same page, especially on the portion of, of the project he's going to be responsible for. So that's moving along. For facilities, we've executed the contract with Greenlight Janitorial. They're going to be starting on April 1st. Also, the Upton Community Center Building Committee, they're going to be wrapping up. They did have a meeting tonight. They're going over final punch list items, including an issue where we had ice buildup on the air handling units that were seeking resolution to try to resolve for a very mild winter. We did have enough to find that there were some issues associated with ice buildup. As we're now enjoying the first official day of spring, our recreation department is getting ready to open up on us and preparing to get final sign offs from Board of Health. We have had to do repairs and adjust settings for sinks, water heaters and paper towel dispensers. Make sure we can get sun off from the Board of Health, the Ramsey Building. For, on economic development tomorrow at nine o'clock. As part of the expression of interest process, we're having a site visit as part of the bid process for the reuse redevelopment of Holy Angels. So that's going to be at nine o'clock. And also a lot of the work that we've been talking about in Upton Center. The state has sent back executed earmark contract documents so that we can start developing scopes of work to get consultants to do that work. Mike already talked about RKG. Last night, I attended amended Upton Regional School Committee Public Hearing for FY25. They did vote to approve a final budget of $40,804,522. This is actually a slight reduction from FY24 budget. And one of them is I'll be working with Superintendent Mark Cohen on is writing our legislative delegation, our transportation funds that coming from the state had a significant reduction in the amount of $180,000. Which is concerned because essentially while we had a small increase in Chapter 70, that reduction basically used up all of it. And so we're going to try to work with our legislative delegation to bring attention to that. Sort of heard what the climate is from the state on overall budget. Also did get confirmation that the superintendent did submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority's expedited building program for repairs at high school. Lastly, just want to identify a couple of important events coming up. March 23rd, Upton Men's Club, Upton Police and Fire, Indian Mass Associations Egg Hunt is at Memorial School, runs from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. On March 29th, there's a Dana Faber removal blood drive. You can visit the, the ESS Senior Center website for information on registering for that. Blood drive is through the Craft Family Blood Drive website. On March 30th, Tri Valley Front Runners will be holding their 43rd Annual Frank Neal and Boston Tune Up 15K. It starts at Nittmunk Regional High School. And then lastly, on April 2nd, the Senior Center is going to be hosting a presentation from the Worcester County District Attorney's Office on scams targeting older adults. Presentation will be at 2:00 PM at the community center and we will be taping that so it can go on the town's Upton cable YouTube station as well as our regular cable channel, so.
Gams are well alive, yes. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, we have next review of zoning articles from the Director of Land Use and Inspection Services. Planning Board Chair, she's on, yep.
Hello again, Mike Antonellis. Mind you, some special services. And as I know, Kathy is, is on as well, says Chair, Kathy Robson. So I'll start with the easiest one first, which is, I forget what our number is. But the change, the UCBD by right uses. Viewing this, support for this change from the Economic Development Committee as well as obviously the Planning Board, the Planning Board. Viewing this is more of an administrative cleanup of the language on that. If you remember, I think it was last meeting, last town meeting, we updated the, the notes portion of the principal use table, which said like a yoga studio needed a special permit in the UCBD district. Things like that, but, but like a gymnasium was by right. So there was a lot of conflict in the, the bylaw for that. This is basically in the same vein, we were looking at it, it said that, I found another note. If I just bothered to look down one, one note below that note. It says that music stores require a special permit in the UCBD district as well as other similar retail uses. So the Economic Development Committee is of the opinion, as well as I, that in the Center Business District, you should want retail uses. You shouldn't be requiring them to go through an honorary special permit process. And so music stores is for some reason captured in that. So I'm not sure what the intent is to be a music store. I don't know if that is, it means a record shop or if it means, you know, a guitar instrument, a piano tuner.
I can only imagine it somehow showed up in there because of the nevermind shop. I mean, I can't imagine that someone would call out a music store one way or the other arbitrarily. But regardless, you should be able to have a music store in your district.
So that's the recommendation.
Particularly if you already have one.
And particularly as, as we're looking to, you know, lease out the, the first floor of Restine, right? So we want to, we want a retail store of general sense, a retail store or retail operation of some kind to be able to fill out that space again, without going through an honorary special.
Yeah, okay.
Kathy, is there anything, I'm sure, is that nothing you want to add on to that one?
No, that was the easy one. You explained it very nicely. Thank you.
Thank you. Amendment to solar, first amendment to the zoning bylaws to provide a solar overlay district by law, Article 33. This, so I'll start with the language. The language is, in, in the bylaw is, if you read through it, intended to be, intended to mimic that of the commercial and industrial district, our CNI district. So currently, solar, brown mounted solar over a certain size, you know, in the bylaws. It's, it's beginning at an acre of panels and over is regulated to some degree. So it's, a site plan is required for up to 40,000. And then after 80,000, which is roughly two acres, a special permit is required. And so what, what we had done with this is basically just modeled everything that the town requires within the CNI district and that includes for all of its controls. You know, the, the setback requirements, height requirements, buffering, you know, anything and everything. This is just intended to be exactly that. So for the, the new solar overlay district will follow this rules that the commercial industrial district placed on solar. So that is what the intent of that language is. The planning board at their last meeting voted to recommend this change by altering one, one thing within that language, which is, as I just mentioned, in CNI district up to an acre is by right through site plan. Planning Board thought it was more appropriate to make, starting at an acre, a special permit. So they kind of lowered the threshold, you know, with the assumption that, or not with the assumption, with the, with the understanding that this will be going into an over existing residentially zoned areas. So you want to have the power to regulate it through, or have, and have more oversight through the planning board's special permit approvals, rather than just putting it through a site and review. So giving up so that the planning board, the, the power to approve or deny. So that was, that was the biggest change from that. And then the, the, the district itself is slated for the Corrigan Sandpits, is that, that's a name? So off of South Street, the, the old Corrigan Sound, Sandpits, which is roughly 80, 80 acres, I believe. And we had this conversation at the last planning board as well. It's, everyone's, I, I, Kathy, pardon me if I'm wrong. I think I can speak for, for most of the, the planning board when I, when I say that the, the planning board is in agreement that reuse of a site like an old sandpit for solar is probably one of the, the better uses you can allow for the reuse. So much like you'd want to be able to allow for, maybe it's a brown field of some kind. I'm not sure if we have any brown fields in town, but, you know, reusing old dumps, as you see, things like that. Where they are unable to be used for much of anything after their useful life. Solar, solar is a, is a decent option and so they like to be able to provide for that. So you have roughly 80 acres worth, worth of new district to allow for only the ability to apply for a special permit within that, that district. So Kathy, is there anything that you want to add on top of that?
Not unless there's questions. No, again, I think you summarized it really well.
I just have a question. I mean, is there somebody that wants to put solar on the South Street pits? Because I know years ago it was offered to be donated to the town and the Army Corps of Engineers would not let us put fields there because it's a flood.
Really?
Yes. So if you can't put fields, I don't know, electricity and water don't mix.
Yeah.
From, you know, has anybody looked into that?
So I haven't looked at the, the elevation of the sandpit. But what I do know, as I am very close to my, my, a lot of my property is actually in the FEMA flood zone for West Hill Dam. You obviously can't do anything in the 269 flood zone. So if it's below that, they can't do anything with it. I doubt that it is, otherwise nobody would even be having this conversation because they would already know that. So my guess is that it's above the 269 flood zone. Is that fair?
I don't know the exact elevation, but I mean, the, 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 the property owner of this, the site currently is obviously interested in, in doing solar there. And he's already engaged engineers to evaluate these things and had conversations with Army Corps of Engineers about his proposal. I mean, this, that
So my, my, so my, my, I mean, my I don't understand how this isn't spot zoning. So this 80 acres of this new overlay, is it just this South Street, street location? Or are these 80 acres spread around the town?
Oh, it's, it's just one location, which is
So I still don't, can someone explain to me why we're spot zoning?
Yeah, so, well, I'll, I'll, I'll my
And again, this is not our jurisdiction as the select board.
No, no.
But it is our warrant and it is a reasonable question and it's a question I can, will ask here.
Absolutely.
Or I will ask it on the town meeting floor. If it was, if you'd like to answer it here, great. Or I will ask it on the town meeting floor. If it was, if you'd like to answer it here, great.
The, if you couldn't put fields, I'd prefer recreational fields, which we are very shy of than solar.
Sure, it's, that area is privately owned anyway. That is a, a question that I flagged early in this conversation, is this spot zoning? Is there a valid argument that, that could, could that argument prevail? Possibly, maybe. It is, but when I spoke with town council, she was enthusiastic that so long as there is a legitimate planning purpose to provide for this use at this location, then it would not be spot zoning. Or at least passable through the.
What's prohibiting the property owner from developing this land as solar now?
It's, it's not, it's not a permissible principal use for a property.
In that zone?
Correct.
Okay.
What is?
And we want to change the zoning to allow this specific property to do a specific thing. I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with putting solar there. What I'm, I mean, I don't know the law on spot zoning, but I do know that as a practice and former chairman of a planning board in another town, that it's not a good idea. Because do you know what's going to happen tomorrow? Someone's going to come to the zoning board, the planning board, the town or sue us to say, hey, Joe Smith on South Street got his own little private zoning done so he could do his solar farm. I want one too. I live over on Mechanic Street or Fowler Street. I got twenty acres. I'd like solar here. So can we do a little? So why does the planning board support this?
I would, the earlier point of the, because it was presented to them from the interest of the property owner. That was what got them to consider it. And if you remember, this was a, this was an issue that came up at the, I believe it was last town meeting as well. Whereas I was provided information from town council that the, the through recent case law, it is, solar is a protected use, I'll say, within the state. Being that it is, it is likely that the town's current zoning with regard to sort is not up to snuff with how the state would like to see it treated if it were to be challenged in the courts.
Yeah.
And so this is not necessarily a, an answer to that. But it is a step towards an answer to that, which is the, the planning board presented with the question relative to this property, looked at it generally as, well then, can we just amend it? Can we amend our zoning generally so that we're not doing what you were suggesting?
Yeah, which is what we tried to do last time. People got uneasy about that.
Down the town didn't want us. It got, and almost anywhere.
Right.
I'll say, but there's a lot of caveats almost anywhere, but.
I'm with you.
Yeah. So then the face with, well, let's go back to the original question of it. If can we support this particular location at, at this time? And the answer, the, as of last meeting was yes. And again, the, the reason why that was the answer is because it could be explained as a legitimate planning purpose of treating and otherwise, I'll say useless, but I don't mean useless. And otherwise useless piece of land to, to, in this case, provide for carbon neutral green energy, however you want to describe it.
Perfect. Yeah. Super helpful. That was exactly the information I needed. My second follow-up question is, why is it otherwise useless?
Oh, yeah, I don't mean like completely useless, but.
Like, like, why wouldn't it just like build a house on it, subdivide it, sell it? Do it develop like what people do with land that they want to, that they own in a zone and want to do something with it, they can develop it. Is it otherwise not developable for some reason?
Not necessarily.
I, go ahead. If the Army Corps is involved in it, it has to be in the floodplain.
A lot of it is in floodplain.
A lot of it is.
They definitely couldn't put solar panels in the flood.
No, I know, but as part of the developing of it, you can't build within floodplain.
So.
I think when it was used as a sandhill pit, it was brought down beyond the useful. There's layers of earth and it was brought down too low, which could bring it below two sixty-nine. That's my understanding, having known the family and knowing that it was sold maybe about a year ago to this person. So it's, it's a recent purchase in historical, but I, I understood there were, people had looked at it to develop it. And because different spots have been dug so deep, it was not developed.
Because they're below that two sixty-nine.
I don't know. My understanding is when, when it was being mined or whatever the correct term is, it was brought down too low. And the Army Corps of Engineer had an issue with it because as I said, the town said, wouldn't that be eighty acres worth of fields?
Right.
You know, a whole recreation facility.
I mean, there was, there are other.
There was an issue that it couldn't be developed even so much as for fields because whether it was brought down too far, it was in the floodplain. I don't remember specific, but there are issues with the land itself.
For other types of more traditional development.
So in, in being in.
Can't put house in a flood zone.
And, and, and then being in an agricultural residential area, it's obviously very limited into what it can be used as. The issue with uses such as sand pits, I mean, the, the earth has been so drastically changed because of that use. It, it very much jeopardizes future buildability of that land into other types of uses that would, you know. In, in this case, it wouldn't be suitable for a, a, a family subdivision. This particular site, no, I, I don't, I think I can go out on a limb and say that, no, it wouldn't be.
Do we know why not though?
But so. I'm allowed in my depth in getting into the specifics of that, but I just know generally. Because when you go into, when you do substantial earthwork to a, to a piece of land, I mean, you're, you're altering the earth in such a way that, you know, you might end up with, you know, soil that doesn't occur. Just, just instability of the earth itself. So things, things like that is my understanding of it. Again, without being a expert in that sort of, you know, that's an engineering sort of geological question.
Got it.
But, but, but that is my understanding of how that is, that is treated and how it is intended to be treated and used. And then the floodplain issue is sort of a separate, but very similar, obviously because they're feeding off each other in this instance.
Yes, yeah. Hopefully this will help prepare us for an effective town meeting discussion. I don't have any other questions.
Got it. For me. Okay, Kathy? Yeah, I mean, just one other thing to add is that the planning board did look at a number of different scenarios on this. And the engineering plans did show that the, you know, there is a piece of that land where solar panels cannot go because it falls below, you know, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, Brett, but goes below that number, but most of the area is above that limit. And the Conservation Commission has also been involved in the discussions on this. They spoke at the meetings. You know, another issue that did come up is that when you're looking at, you know, possible uses, you know, a, a large scale housing, you know, this, this, the pits are like a bowl, so they're not visible. And you're not looking at extensive traffic going back and forth. So this takes a piece of really undevelopable land and turns it into tax generating, you know, environmentally beneficial, you know, solar farm. And, you know, that's sort of what the planning board was looking at. But it did take us a, I don't know, about six meetings to sort of go over all this and to get the details that we wanted. And we did have a robust discussion on, on, you know, all the issues that have been raised during this meeting.
Love it. Thank you. And may we'll probably, I may just sync up offline so that we don't have to waste other people's time. But I'm, I'm just super curious about this because I think it's very, it's a very interesting case. And I obviously trust all of my fellow volunteers in this town, so I appreciate it and trust their expertise, but would like to learn from them. So thank you.
Maybe it would be good if you got an opinion and writing from council.
Oh, sure.
As far as the spots on it goes.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
The, the next heavy hitter is inclusionary zoning. Or as we refer to it. Inclusion of affordable housing, so article thirty-two inclusionary zoning. You know, so I'm not going to, it's pretty lengthy document here with a lot of detail. But the major component, I guess I'll back up for, for, for folks who might, I think everybody probably knows at this point what it is. But folks who may not know, inclusionary zoning is the practice of requiring, when you have residential development of a certain, residential development of a certain size of, let's assume it's apartment units, just for discussion, apartment units, market rate. There would be a requirement attached to that development through a zoning bylaw to provide for dedicated affordable housing. Now, obviously the intent and the use of this here in Massachusetts is there is a forty B law that requires towns out of ten percent of its housing stock to be dedicated, that's affordable, as determined by the state. This intends to, I'd say it's not, it's not going to be a tool, I don't want to misguide people, it's going to be a tool to get us to ten percent or to get any town to ten percent really outside of one twenty-eight. But it's, it's a tool at which helps towns not fall significantly behind. So that if you use any other tool in your toolbox, affordable housing trusts, whatever it may be, in order to then make up that gap and do the other things that, that towns are charged for doing to, to get to that ten percent. But this bylaw is that, that regu, that regulatory tool that requires, again, developments with a certain number of market rate units to provide dedicated affordable units. In this case, from six to, so it roughly starts out at ten percent and then graduates from there. So six to nine, the trigger being a baseline of six units. Any development of any kind, any size, not any size, of, of any kind. If, if it's a subdivision with six, proposed six units, if it's for some reason a stretch of townhouses that is going to be six units, you know, use your imagination. The requirement is to then, at six units, the developer has to provide one affordable. That goes all the way up to ten and then ten, ten being category. And then from ten to nineteen, you provide two, twenty to twenty-nine, three. So that's, you know, it's obviously, it's, it's a, it's a ten percent ratio up to there. After thirty percent, it graduates to a twelve point five percent ratio. And then forty-five or greater is a fifteen percent ratio. Now, obviously the, the math on that is relating to the return that a developer expects to see. Obviously, there's greater rate of return for much larger developments. Therefore, they can provide a larger number of affordable units within a particular development. So that's why you see the sort of graduating step of affordable housing units requirement. As I said before, it starts at six units and that is for any development type. And that, that controls for senior, senior housing developments like the town has seen very recently. Those would be required going forward to provide whatever the required share of affordable housing units is. Obviously, we're there to be multifamily, that, that would be, that would be required. This sort of reflects back on the M B T A a little bit, although there's separate issues, the M B T. Yes, very much related, but, but the separate issues individually. You know, it's, there's, there's detail in here as far as when market rate units can be given their certificates of occupancy. If for some reason they haven't even started, like a developer hasn't even started on an affordable unit to ensure that, you know, a developer doesn't create all the market rate houses and then leaves.
We have before the affordable ones are done.
The, I guess the thing I'll, I'll flag is, oh, I haven't talked about payment in lieu of, so. In, in, in this scenario, so the, a developer would have two options. They could provide the market rate house, the affordable housing as accepted and determined by the state. You know, there's, there's a language in here that says, hey, if you're, per this bylaw, it has to be accepted by the state and go on the town's S H I list. That's the whole purpose of it, to get toward ten percent. If you do not provide those units in reality in your development, you would then have to pay what is referred to as a payment in lieu of, which is an assessed amount. And that, that money goes into the affordable housing trust. Obviously, the affordable housing trust being the authority in town to go after affordable housing in the sense of creating it, right? To, to help the town achieve its, its goals in regards to affordable housing. So that's, that's the, that's the intent of it, that's the use of it. So if you're not providing the, the unit that you pay into this account, the town can use it to provide it on your behalf essentially, so.
How the taxes batted on the affordable units, based on the affordable units? Payment in lieu of taxes or the taxes?
Oh, it's not even in lieu of taxes. I'm sorry. That's, it's because it's very similar. Yeah, yeah. This, this is, is payment in lieu of units. Yeah, so it's not, it was not, it has nothing to do with taxes.
Too bad.
Yeah. So, so again, it's, if you, if a developer does not provide affordable units, they would then pay the fee in order to not provide the units, that fee goes to the Affordable Housing Trust.
And how, how is the fee determined?
So in, in, in this bylaw, and this was modeled after Lancaster's bylaw, which was approved by the state recently. The payment in lieu of is, the, so I'll just read from it. The, the fee of an affordable ownership unit shall be equal to eighty percent of the average listing price of comparable market rate units of the same bedroom count within the proposed development. And then the, it says the special granting authority, which in this case, special permanent granting authority, which in this case should be the planning board, shall make the final determination what that will be when they're reviewing an application for this. This, this, this requires also a special permit to the planning board, I mean, which is the, any, any, any application of this size would go before the planning board anyway. So, so they would have the opportunity to, to set the fee at that time. Should be fairly easy to determine what a market rate value of whatever the proposed is. And at that time, we can get that information, you know, we can get that information from the developer and cross-reference it with other, other information available, so. The.
No, I just wanted to, to add something to what Michael is saying is that, you know, besides being chair of the planning board, I'm also chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. And this is something that we see as a critical tool in helping not only to bring us in compliance with the forty B law, but also to provide housing that this community so, you know, so sorely needs. We are currently, we have a deficit of a little under seven percent from our affordable housing obligation, which means a forty B can, you know, a developer can come in with a forty B at any time. That deficit is going to be growing. When governor's landing comes online, it'll grow by, you know, ten or twelve units. When Cobbles Creek is fully occupied, you know, and there will be other subdivisions in the town of Upton. This does not impact, you know, a, a person, a property owner that wants to build a house on an existing lot or two houses on some existing property. It affects primarily, it affects subdivisions, you know, six or more units. And we see this as being critical. And we see this as being critical and helping to stabilize our deficit while we move forward to try to figure out, you know, how to, you know, increase our supply of, of, of affordable housing. The other thing I just want to highlight, because I think it gets confused often, is the MBTA communities law is an economic development law, it is not affordable housing law. In fact, it limits the amount of affordable housing that can be included in MBTA communities. It limits it to ten percent, unless through certain gyrations, you can get it up a little bit, but you know, the MBTA communities law is not a solution to our affordable housing, you know, crunch right now in the town of Upton. And so this decreases our vulnerability to a forty B development, and it also, you know, provides, it doesn't provide, you know, housing for a lot of people, because affordable housing in Upton is not really affordable housing. You know, but it does provide, you know, housing for, you know, young professionals and, you know, you know, young families that make a decent income.
I guess I'll, I'll leave it, that, I'm thinking about packing on that one.
All right. Any other questions?
I don't have any, thank you.
No, love it, thank you.
I got one more, you can leave it. So, the, and this, so there's no recommendation on this for the planning board yet. Yeah, this is still in public hearings through the planning board. But the, the planning board is, is currently reviewing personal wireless facilities bylaw. What this bylaw aims to control for is what is referred to as five G wireless small cell antennas that in more urban areas tend to go up on, on telephone poles, down major routes, but obviously in, in city squares and city centers as a way to provide for more direct cell service to, to carriers and users. The, this bylaw, what this does is, is essentially calls it out as a use in our, in our bylaw, because it's not, you know, we don't mention small cell wireless anywhere. It didn't exist, I don't know how many years ago, but it's very recent, obviously. So it calls it out as a use and then enables the, the planning board to, to control for that use through the implementation of a special permit. So, it, it's, so the bylaw is intent on calling it out as an accessory use, as it will be likely used. For council, it, it, it's unlikely it's ever going to be a primary use of, of any particular lot, so you know, it's gonna be set up probably with your schools, city centers, and village districts, and institutional uses that, that want to provide for that, that use in that amenity. But, but won't ever be a primary use, so it'll be regulated as an accessory use, but that accessory use on private property, I say private property as to distinguish from right of ways, streets. So, i- in, in, in most cases, small cell wireless would be going up on, within streets under the control of the select board, or the, the DOT, if it's on one forty, right of statehood. But for, for when it is proposed on, on private land, that's what, that's what zoning, that's what the zoning bylaw controls for, so that's what this aims to control for, is set if anyone is applying for, or wants to have small cell wireless on their property, again, probably not individual residences anytime soon, probably more like institutional uses, things of that nature, would require a special permit through the planning board. What this bylaw also does in its current program is allow, it, it basically calls out the planning board, obviously, as a special permit granting authority, but specifically empowers them to create rules and regulations around that use, and the intent at, at this moment would be to work in the height requirements, aesthetic requirements, you know, all those sorts of, in the field, how it, how it's seen on the street, how it's, you know, distance from the structures and residences and things like that. The rules and regulations, which is obviously not a bylaw, would be approved through the planning board in how this would be regulated after, after it's approved through town meeting as being introduced as an actual use. So that's sort of the, the, the quick overview of, of what that is intending to do. Of course, planning board's still in discussion with, with the language as presented. But this also makes specific note of suggesting that the select board should also adopt similar rules and regulations that the planning board adopts for their zoning bylaws for your essential poll hearings, right? So a- as, as the select board, you approve the utility goals, because you, you oversee your, your rights of way. It would empower the select board to adopt rules and regulations for all of the same things I just said, that the planning board would be controlling for, and obviously, we would want those to be substantially similar in nature. We would want to have substantially different rules for the, the rights of way than you would and, and for, for private use for this particular use.
Okay. Questions?
Any questions?
And on your radar to do that if this could, yeah, makes a lot of sense.
I guess that's, thank you, Michael, thank you.
Kathy.
Yep.
Thanks, Mike, thanks, Kathy.
Yep, thank you, bye-bye.
Yeah.
Have a nice.
Hi.
Yeah, you guys do.
Thanks.
Okay. Next on the agenda is to reopen annual town meeting warrant for amendment to Article one, CTC administrative article, and two, BBT debt exclusion article.
So, in your, before you do that, I just want to point out and make sure you're aware that you skipped over public comment on the agenda.
Hey, we will take it.
You can take it anytime you'd like, I just wanted to make sure you were aware.
Okay.
So, in the board's packet, you have two, two requests. One, we have a copy of the email from Falkberry CTC Chair asking for the increase in CTC administrative account for FY twenty-five to go from fifteen to twenty-five thousand. Because this is increasing a previously submitted article, we would have to open that back up, accept the change, and then close the hearing. The second request is modification to BBT debt authorization language. On Friday, the town received a email from Dr. Fitzpatrick that identified that the school, BBT school committee had revised their vote for requesting debt authorization to allow for the debt authorization contingent on submission and receipt of funds to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And I did have town council review that language from Friday, and it is in the revised packet, that's online, but also I printed off a copy for you showing the original language that BBT has, and then the second is edits from town council. Also highlighted and underlined is that the town's previous approval of debt authorization back in two thousand and one, that was also to exempt that from the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half. So, this town council language includes that. Should the select board wish to make those changes, to put it on the warrant, it still allows the finance committee to discuss whether or not we'd want to have it as a debt exclusion, but we would have to first thing on our April second, that would be the last time for the select board to vote to place a question on the, the ballot, so I've already confirmed with Denise Smith that she will need language in the warrant to vote on April second, should we want to place that question on whether or not this debt authorization is excluded from Prop Two and a Half.
I think, well, my opinion is it should be excluded from Two and a Half, and what would you say about the MSBA? Does he apply?
That now it's, he has applied, so that the debt authorization is, can, that the town's approval of debt authorization is contingent on funding from MSBA.
How long does he, does anyone know that it could take MSBA?
I'm looking online at the approval process, that'll provide notification until early fall.
Is that one of those things where in order to apply for the exclusion, he needs our approval?
So it's not required.
Does it help?
Anthony Steele, the assistant superintendent, who came back in February to put on their request, said that they were seeking this authorization from the member towns to strengthen their application. So you have two different school districts taking two different courses. Mendon Upton has also submitted a statement of interest. They're waiting to hear about their statement of interest before then approaching both towns. BBT is looking at getting it in advance, whether or not that will make their application stronger. It's not a required element, so it's, it's hard to, to say.
Do you know what the feeling is of the towns about a debt exclusion?
I know from the most immediate neighbors that having this language is in, but that's contingent for MSBA, makes them feel a lot better, because that's ultimately the concern, talking with Sutton Douglas and Northbridge, they're in the line by way of debt exclusion, and they wanted to, if BBT didn't come forward, they were gonna put on their warrant that is contingent on MSBA. So, BBT has been meeting with enough towns one-on-one, and last week, when they met with Northbridge, it was relayed, this is the, they're getting Northbridge's approval, we got that email on Friday. I think they clearly changed their, their, they corrected their force to, to try to ensure that they got approval from the district towns, they, they need nine of thirteen.
Okay.
So, and going back to the first item with CTC, the reason for the increase is not only to, the, out of the fifteen that's paid for out of FY twenty-four, about twelve thousand goes to pay one of our, our staff who provides administrative support for the CTC, and especially with the action plan the CTC is undertaking, you know, that role is kind of continuing. And also, they want an additional funds in case they need to do some additional administrative tasks, value proposals, get someone more to assist in narrowing down and, and even do appraisals in support of potential projects. So they were just looking for an increase of, of ten thousand, it's all comes out of the CTC administrative. We're allowed five percent, and we got the final numbers, and essentially, CTC is a million dollars, so we're well below the five percent that would be allowed to use for administrative services.
So, you make a motion on both of them or one of the time?
I have it written as both, if you want to separate now.
I do just have one question.
No, I was just.
Thank you. No, I don't know, I'm sure, so Mike, I think the answer is no, but I, when you started talking about MURSD in our school district, you know, there's a lot of conversations that's happening about deferred maintenance at, or maintenance needs at our Mendon Upton Regional Schools District facilities. Does the town making a decision recommendation vote on what BBT is doing have any potential impact on MURSD's ability to get funding from the state for school projects? Mean said another way, is the state gonna look at BBT and Mendon Upton, MURSD, and say, hey, BBT just got X amount of money from the state to do their thing, so MURSD, sorry, you're gonna have to wait another five years, because we just put this money here? Or does it not work that way?
That realistically shouldn't work, it doesn't. Regional districts are different than, say, the, if we only had a school district, a local school district.
Yeah.
Where regional districts are given more authority to apply to that initial statement, statement of interest.
Yeah.
Because they, they have more autonomy working as a region. The only requirement is that within ninety days of receiving the invitation,
Yeah.
they then have to get it committed. So, it's not a requirement, it's not even on the evaluation criteria. So, there's two ways you can look at it, maybe it does make BBTs a little stronger, but also it may be more politically that they want two shots at the basket rather than, and Upton knows, you're, we come forward, and Upton are gonna know what it not work for.
Yeah.
So, but it, Mendon and BBT, they would be, and then up in BBT, they'd be thrown into the full sort of collection of all the applications coming in, they put a hole on the expected repair program for a couple of years, so it's gonna be highly competitive.
Do we have any sense or feedback from the superintendent of MURSD on any of this? Opinion on anything to do with the BBT thing, I think they aren't related.
Certainly.
They, they're, okay, so they're aware.
They're aware, certainly. I mean, this, Paul Farren and I have been attending the, the capital subcommittee meetings, we've been communicating upfront with not only Jay Byer, the business director, but also Warren Cohen, the superintendent, exactly what's going on within BBT as part of the district as far as figuring out, so.
To the chair, if I may. Have to keep in mind that the only area where school building assistance is going to apply is on the roof. Okay, you have to take the, um, both schools
Yeah.
have the same issue, the air handle is around the roof.
Yeah.
Change the material, you have to take the air handles off.
Yeah.
Again, when you put air handles back, you're gonna put the current technology, the nine to twenty-seven year old technology.
Yeah.
So, they're, they're gonna be on the hook for that. The only place there is FDAD reimbursement is on the roof, that applies in all situations, because there is a, several million dollar in a multi-page evaluation that MURSD has had, it's, it's out there in the MURSD webpage, it's in budget pages and things like that, telling everything that this evaluation is entails. But, to repeat, the only place they're gonna get support from School Building Authority is on the roof. And that's, you know, it's like a forty percent, I think that's still a moving factor, isn't it?
Or the, or the affecting portion.
And that's totally, that's totally different than like if we said, hey, you know what, we need to build a new elementary school. It's, it, that's a different grant or process with the state. That's really what I was thinking about, less than maintenance, but more just like if we need to build a new school, instead of Misco, we want to build a new school.
Do you want to talk about building a new school at Misco?
Yeah. I mean, I don't hear Adam Scherf.
I just say this.
See, that's a load.
If you're talking a new school at Misco, you're talking ten, fifteen years before something like that's gonna happen.
Appreciate the wisdom.
Some, some improvements for HVC can be done for great communities.
Yeah.
When I was on a call with regarding streetlight conversion, I did talk about that, it would involve both Mendon and Upton working together to update our energy production plan, it's not impossible. And I did talk more briefly last night, we're gonna follow up to see, depending on their recommendations for HVC, if it's something that's worth or so, that could be a significant savings as well.
Another way as well.
Yeah, Adam Scherf, one more, if I may. Please station. I'm understanding what we're hearing. I'm understand what we're hearing, John, and I'm hearing all of these meetings at Misco. It's the fact that they have no generator. They've lost three days, they've lost, I think, three days of school this year because of power outage at Misco. This, it's a uh, they don't have municipal water, they don't have municipal sewer. So they have, if you have no power, not getting the water out of the ground and you're not pumping the sewer after where it's supposed to be.
And the building.
In addition, all that, so even if I see that, you know, everything that you require uh electricity for.
Yeah.
So that that is a high priority.
Yeah.
Uh yes, it is getting a generator. That in along with the, if you, if you if you look hard enough, you can find it in uh joking direction to the to the pages where there is a multi page, it's gotta be a hundred pages of where they did this evaluation in Europe. And I I don't say this in defense of the school district. I'm just saying.
The information is.
The fact that what we're hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, so what is your feeling about doing a uh contingent two and a half override and a contingent um MSBA reimbursement?
Uh I definitely am comfortable. Uh I'm I'm definitely fine with the SBA thing. I didn't, I must have like, we're talking about contingent two and a half override. I don't understand how that's gonna work.
We make it both. They'd have to get a contingent and they'd have to get an over, two and a half override. And they'd have to get reimbursement on.
So that's where in in this handout that back in the underlined.
Yeah.
Uh to to sort of get it on the warrant, I, if it's even to be discussed because we can always in the motion eliminate it, but to even have it as an option, we'd have to have it in the article.
Yeah.
And then that allows for finance committee to discuss it with the select board. Um and ultimately going into town meeting, we can decide whether that's how we want to handle it. One of the main things is is that.
I know, I I, yeah, I definitely feel like I need to process more about putting something on the or the talks about a potential two and a half over. It just seems like.
It's a.
It's a.
I I I whatever you want to call it, when you say proposition two and a half override at a town meeting, people's heads are gonna explode if they feel like they've been blindsided with something that even remotely looks like a proposition two and a half override. So we can call it what we want.
But if it's dependent on an SP, MSBA uh reimbursement, it reduces the two and a half override by whatever we're reimbursed on each yearly payment.
I'm cheering, I mean. Talk about that is not gonna be on the hook for ten million dollars.
Well, we know that. We don't.
Well, this, and again, this debt is divided up between the two towns based on the population, I mean, I'm based on this, these pound share, it's a time the debt is assumed.
But on the two million, on the ten million dollar, we are a seven point two percent share.
Yes.
Okay, so you're up around seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Over twenty years. That's the last, I believe the last one debt was twenty years.
Yeah.
So and back in two thousand and one, the original article was, it actually identified the Upton share at uh seven hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. Um and then when it came to the motion, that was reduced down to three hundred and eighty two thousand dollars. And then there was a ballot question that then had that amount as debt exclusion. Um so.
If we bring this art, sorry to interrupt you. If we if we bring an article to town meeting floor that has these words in it, we're gonna there's gonna be a lot of questions, a lot of controversy, a lot of what is this? What does this mean? How does this work? Why are you putting in this in here? What are you trying to sneak past us? I know we're not trying to sneak anything. We're here, it's public, it's recorded, right? Like it, right, you literally have to read the fine court say, and that such debt be allowed to be exempt of the provisions of proposition two and a half. The average person that walks in on Tuesday night and says, all right, I'm here, I'm looking at this, you're asking me to vote on this. They literally will know nothing about anything other than what they read on these words.
This isn't your aesthetic solution, you're bad.
It's the first warrant article that we've ever included that says shall be allowed to be exempt of the provisions of proposition two and a half.
That's the, that's the lack of language part.
That's that, that is in every override group pad, that's the same, that's the same language part, I'm sorry.
You asked for a proposition two and a half. It's just a plain proposition two and a half. It's different than if it's to.
You, I agree.
The debt.
I very much appreciate you trying to educate me. I understand that.
Okay.
I'm only stating that before we put an article on the warrant that has these words in it, we should know that it's going to create a significant amount of confusion and conversation and dialogue that I am mindful may disturb and distract from the intent of this article, which is otherwise very straightforward and simple. So help me understand what the benefit of adding that confusion not to me on the town meeting floor, when this gets read, someone's gonna stand up and ask that? Maybe they won't, maybe everybody'd be like, yeah, whatever. But is that what you think? You think you blur it right like you and I know, we know, but we do this all day, every day.
I ask you what your feelings were about that.
And I appreciate that, Matt, yes. Thank you.
Um the language is put in by the attorneys and it's pretty standard. So um if KP wants that language in the article, I think it can be explained very easily at town hall floor. But this is why it's written like this.
Oh.
And this is what the potential is or is not. It's based on ABC and that will happen. So I see those eyebrows, but.
We're gonna sit sitting in town meeting, I'm just gonna sit there and I'm just gonna be pulling under my breath, so.
Brian will have a grand old time. Brian and Phil will have a great time.
So maybe, maybe.
And we can chuckle all we want.
So maybe I can. It's fine, that's fine. I I I I have no issue with doing it.
Right.
Other than.
And I said, chairman, why don't I just interject?
Please, oh, sorry.
Cause he will. Sorry.
Chairman.
Yes.
Maybe calls her that at the last annual town meeting, we went through the entire omnibus budget without one hole.
Did anywhere in anything on the warrant have the words proposition two and a half?
No.
I rest my, I rest, I rest my case.
No, because that is unique to that particular article.
I rest my case.
So um.
I understand what you're saying and I agree with you and appreciate that. You and I are not the people that are gonna be sitting in this meeting with their heads spinning off their shoulders because there's something in here about proposition two and a half. So.
That's a point of action.
Hey, that's a different conversation.
So maybe I can assist, just frame for the purpose of uh sort of the warrant. Uh there's no matter what, this article required a level of education because um the average resident may not be aware that BBT is looking for a ten million dollar um uh roof HVAC project. Um if we, and so there's gonna be a discussion about that no matter what. The question ends up how we as as the town of Upton are gonna fund it. Without the language underlined, it's falling under the our um general fund and we're paying that amount um uh under just the the general levy for the town.
Within the levy, which is impossible to do.
So as we start to see costs that are escalating and then we see competing projects, we're gonna be challenged with, are we doing this within the levy or are we doing outside of the levy?
You just lost every single person sitting in the town meeting floor when you said levy.
So but that's where we have to really sort of explain it, like we did for the community center on how we funded that, because that's not funded within our general operating budget. So there definitely is that education part. There's really explaining what this means because for a lot of people for the community center, they didn't vote as a debt exclusion, they voted for a community center. So I totally understand that. For us to have this conversation and to get the finance committee's feedback on what the best way to pay for it, the, if we're to have even the option of a debt exclusion, it would have to be on the warrant because otherwise we're then forced into having it um paid out of the general. So for this purpose, it sort of allows for us to have that conversation. And if on town meeting floor, we're like, nope, we're not doing debt exclusion then on in the motion, we just don't have that that line, but we can't add it back in. That's sort of the challenge.
Well, this language is not new to the people in town. We just did it for the community center. We've done it for the water, we've done it for the other school. We've done it a number of uh police station, went way back. And I mean, people understand.
It still has.
Yeah, I mean, they get two bites at it.
Over unders one hour of discussion on town meeting floor. We put two and a half on. I'm done.
Okay.
I can make the motion, which if you're both comfortable, I'm happy to make the motion.
I'm comfortable.
I will.
I move that the board vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty nine, Section ten, to reopen the warrant for the Thursday, May second, twenty twenty four annual town meeting to amend Articles fifteen B and Article nineteen as discussed and as may be amended by town council and to immediately close said warrant.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Unanimous action. I'll open it up to the public now.
You should start making me go sit on that side of the desk.
He should set a timer.
For myself, my.
All right, see, that's why she skipped over it, there wasn't any, see?
Worth them.
Let me see. Uh reviewed and discussion of draft annual town meeting warrant.
Um so this is just on in case we need to. The only other thing in that material that I um provided for you is that BBT School Committee did both send.
Stabilization.
The stabilization article, so I'll be pulling that off of one. Um so now with with these changes, um we're essentially locked in with the warrant unless there was anything specific that the warrant meant to revisit that.
The only thing I wasn't sure about was the varying of utilities, is that?
That also, we have opportunity to, depending on the conversation.
Yeah.
Because it was supposed for reopening or not, it's gonna either schedule a separate meeting or we can handle it on the second
Yeah.
to then add that in depending on how the conversation went.
But that was the only open question I had about the warrant.
Do we have any estimates on something like that?
I'm working to pull things together at least only for preliminary engineering study to really sort of pull things together.
Uh other than that, I don't have any other outstanding open questions, concerns about them.
Okay, so you want a motion to close the warrant?
We don't have.
You opened it, you gotta close it.
We immediately closed.
Immediately closed it, see? In that motion?
Sure did. Everything in the. We're good like that. I mean, by we, I mean, Joe. Definitely sometimes.
Occasionally, occasionally. All right. Discussion of the proposed forty B at forty seven Main Street.
Okay. Um so for this item, originally we put it on the agenda, we were gonna write a letter that then sort of uh took our comments that were part of the site eligibility letter that went to mess house and then repackage and give it, give it to the ZVA. Funny thing happened is that then Kevin Lobeser came in and basically wants to revise the plan, eliminating units and change the site plan as well, eliminated a lot of um things that were were problematic, cutting right through the wetlands, uh very large and massive retaining walls because of the changing end grade. Uh so um had uh asked for a set and also Mr. Lobeser provided for the board a, and I'm gonna put this on the screen since with the exception of the board, no one will be able to see this on the table. Um so I need to screen share for a second. Um so in the board's packet, there's a three page memo that basically Mr. Lobeser uh drafted to um explain some of the changes that he had uh made not only regarding the uh select board's uh letter, but that also uh through the public hearing process with the ZVA um and also peer review from the uh ZVA's peer consultant. Uh so what has happened is not only changed materials, color scheme, but uh one of the things that is no longer part of the plan is that there was the uh essentially a basement level that had units as well and large retaining walls that had um uh steps and and sidewalks uh to get people from various sides of the building. So this is more of a uniform, uh flat site now. Um they've eliminated a uh significant number of of uh decks, which my understanding and per uh Mr. Lobeser's memo um was partly because of comments for meeting with residents and the adjacent neighborhoods. Um uh the total number goes from sixty eight to uh sixty and I have the site plan up on on the screen. Uh they're able to eliminate the uh cross connection through the wetlands for water and sewer uh because essentially the uh grades allow for gravity sewer down to Main Street. They also have reduced the height of the building by seven feet. Uh it does allow for additional uh plantings and retaining of vegetation between some properties on uh Whitney uh and the development. Uh so wanted first sort of show these to the board. Uh Mr. Lobeser unfortunately wasn't able to attend. Um uh and these plans are gonna be presented to the ZVA tomorrow. Um uh so then the the town's peer review engineer will also be able to go through and reevaluate since uh it does require revisiting any of the civil engineering reviews associated with drainage. Um my understanding is that also it it addresses some of the concerns the fire department had mainly because those um uh larger retaining walls and uh staircases got in the way of of trying to get uh fire coverage as close to the building as as possible and setting up equipment. Uh.
Can I ask you a quick question?
No, but.
I'm getting carried away.
He's on tonight.
Yeah. What, do we know which of these is this like corresponds to the bot, like which of these is facing School Street versus facing Whitney and Hazel Team? Do we know?
So.
I mean, I know we know, I just don't know. Can someone tell me?
So um on the screen, I think you have it in there. Uh this is the front elevation showing sort of the what they call main entrance storefront. That's what you see there.
That's this, and that's what faces Hazel Team and Whitney.
Right, so then this fine elevation here, which is this side, is what would be.
Visible from School Street.
Correct.
Got it, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, thank you. Helps, I mean, not that they look so different, but there's a little difference.
My understanding is so so the dams are still still part, but. My understanding is solar panels are still still part of off. Yes.
That's not indicated in the.
No.
All right. So the solar panels would be some sort of slanted height thing.
I may with the chair.
You may.
Well, this uh new design, we're going back out to all the departments for comment and see how it's changed substantially. So we can review that.
Yeah, with the chair. Plans haven't been formally submitted through my office as of yet. Uh but once once they do.
Thank you.
So from a from a procedural standpoint. Mr. Lobasur has already indicated that he's gonna have to request from the ZBA an extension for the applicable deadlines. Um at least because it's gonna take uh time for a peer consultants to review. Uh one of the questions that I had for the board was um these materials are in the revised packet so that if you want to take a look and then if you. Um I can send out sort of the draft that. We previously had. There's just bullet points that you want me to start to include. Then for the April second meeting, we can I can have a draft pulled together. They won't be really taking much testimony outside of presenting the plans tomorrow night. Then they'll come back middle of April for that revise. So there would be a good opportunity. Uh for us to take a look at these plans identical. Whether or not, you know, there's things that we still want to encourage additional changes. Um since we probably would wanna uh consider if there are some significant events that some of our staff. Be aware of some of those things.
Um have the neighbors, they've been shown these new plans?
I do not know. Mr. Lobasur had um sought. Advice on reaching out. We and Mike and I absolutely said, reach out because this is not something you want to delay waiting to present at the ZBA. To what extent he's reached out individually, I'd have to ask the the butters.
And he can get back to me and his um associate got back to me on Tuesday and wanted something on. And this is Tuesday night, wanted something on Thursday and there wasn't time to get word out or to book a room. So we had to delay it. And he said it would be after the CBA meeting.
After the one tomorrow night? Okay.
Actually, I tried to get a hold of him the day. Um I was told he was going to be gone for another week. Do you know if he's playing any attending tomorrow?
I don't think he was gonna have an intense tomorrow, but it's his team will be.
Yeah, because he said, you know, I, as I said, I did try to get a hold of him and they said he would be out for another week.
So you'll go before the zoning or they will go before the zoning board tomorrow night and ask to for the extension?
Yep, I reached out to uh the project manager today and just confirmed what the the plan is. And so. So I was I was inquiring as to when I was gonna get the formal submit to my office. Um so they said they can't submit the formal formal submitting to my office tomorrow so I can make plans, get on the website and all that. Um and then uh they'll proceed tomorrow night um with a. Part presentation to show, you know, uh the materials that might support here tonight. Uh and then uh as Joe saying, a request, a continuance of the public hearing, obviously it's the next meeting. But also an extension of the public hearing deadline to allow more time within, you know, stretch story, a lot of time to for the zoning board to conduct their business.
Changes.
Given that they're submitting changes and they they know obviously that they have to go through the the process again with our our uh peer review for civil engineering. So. Which I mean, that's that was up for discussion tomorrow night, civil engineering. So this is really what this will uh impact is is delaying that civil engineering review.
Can I ask you, have you set up a meeting to discuss with either Mr. Lobasur or his team or?
His associate said we would do that tomorrow night after the meeting.
Oh, okay. Good. Any other questions? Any questions here?
Are we still going to go forward with the the board's letter that they wrote? Through the mass housing?
Not tomorrow night because there'll be no discussion any, but for the next meeting. We are.
Yes, our concerns are still the same. I mean, we read Mr. Lobasur's letter and it doesn't. Answer the water issues we still have. Taking off a level and then, you know, doesn't resolve our water issues at all. So those still remain. Most of our issues still remain. You know, and and just looking, I'm not an engineer, but just looking at this quickly, my husband's like, well, what's he doing with all the mechanicals? They were in the basement. So that's why there were only eight units in the basement. So what happened to all the chemicals? I'm sure they'll address that tomorrow night.
Well, they should still have a basement, but it would be closed off.
I mean, they'll still have a foundation. So I didn't how they intend on using that. I don't know. Um yeah, no, I'm sure they'll they'll be able to address that question tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I might my I I don't wanna speculate and I think you can certainly ask all the questions tomorrow night, right? I think the benefit of the changes. And not having the walkout in the back is you basically go from sort of a five story profile to a four story profile. It only reduces the sort of top elevation by eight feet, right? So it lowered the building by about eight feet. But it also visually, uh it looks less visually imposing because you've now gone from that five stories on the walkout to the four stories. The other thing I can say, I like the the. The way that design sort of. For lack of a better word, breaks up because that was the other thing when remember when I was sort of drawing in the last meeting and I was like, this is two hundred feet of building with five stories like this giant big shoebox rectangle awful. This, I feel like. The design, at least aesthetically, tries to minimize the visual impact of the huge. Massive two hundred and ten foot long by X high building. So I think it I think it's better. It's better. It's not perfect. It does. There's obviously still lots of issues, but for me, it's a reflection of. A developer that's wanting to partner with the town to make a best effort to try to improve what he's proposing to do in the town. So that's that's I'm grateful that it's better because better's better. And there's certainly no obligation to do any of this, right? Because that's that's and that's one thing people should should be real at like, I'm not trying to advocate for the developer. I'm not trying to not advocate for the citizens like you're all here. We've all been very open about this. The reality is. Forty B is a law. That the state put on the books so that towns in up in in Massachusetts. Meet affordable how develop affordable housing. When we get to that ten percent, we then have local control. When we don't meet the ten percent, we don't have local control. Until we meet the ten percent, we don't have local control. We put in the housing production plan. Process to try to. Create a plan. So that we can show the state that we're committed to meeting the ten percent. Affordable housing number. We created that committee in order to be able to create the plan. And so from a strategic perspective, we as a board, we as a town are aware of the problem of not having the ten percent, right? Because now we've basically, if we're not at the ten percent, we're ceding local control to the state. We can't. We the only way we can solve that problem is by coming up with a repeatable, sustainable plan. To be at the ten percent or beyond it. We've taken steps as a board. By creating the committee, creating the housing production plan, working with the state to share those plans, identify those areas. So that's all good. Unfortunately, none of that. Gives us any leverage with this particular project. And so the reality is that because we're not at that ten percent, we've taken steps to address that as a board. But because we're not at that ten percent. Uh the developer in this case, Mr. Lobasur and his company. Would have done nothing. They don't need to talk to neighbors. They don't need to talk to a butters. They just they need to go through the ZBA process, but they certainly don't need to respond, right? Like. So again, not trying to justify or like advocate or feel. I don't want people to think like, oh, you're like representing. I'm like, not just saying, the fact is. There's no obligation. Mr. Lobasur has no obligation to make any changes to the plan that was approved by the state. That's all I'll say. And so I'm happy to see this because I think it's better.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Masha. If you need a letter for mass housing to be approved, they did call up the issues that residents brought up and one of those discussions been negotiated. So.
One of them were public safety, right?
Uh we were in a lot of issues.
Yeah.
They were in the other things solicitor claim for them a letter saying the building should discuss these with the town and neighbors. So.
Which is probably part of why he did this, right?
Exactly. So I mean.
It's good that we put pressure because the pressure resulted in change. The community pressure resulted in change and we should continue to exert as much pressure as we can to get what we absolutely want and are happy with. Given the circumstances.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Why does Joe had said that it reduces the number of civil engineering inspections on the water? And the retention of the water? Why? None of that should change.
I'm.
The the ground water is.
I think that was just a miscommunication. So let him clarify what he was saying because I think he misunderstood something.
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry if I misspoke. What I um intended to say was that. The um plans need to go to the our peer review civil engineer to evaluate because they provide all of the. All the elevations, even some of the structure locations because they've changed the grade on the site. That requires going to the peer review engineer.
So you're saying it doesn't. He's saying it actually does trigger that because of the changes, we now need to re-review it, which is why he needs more time. Because with all the changes, you have to give the towns.
Two.
Peer review time.
I don't know if anybody knows this, but this part retention ponds are concerned. They're they're serviced, right? You have to maintain. Who who would the town make sure that those are being serviced? So their development in Laurel Lane, in Laurel Lane is a retention pond. That's completely overgrown. And Kevin sold us, that was the town's responsibility. Now, he says he's gonna be responsible for the ones on this site. But who's gonna make sure he's responsible?
So very often um and through the chair, the uh uh ZBA and improvement conference department has kind of put in place um operation maintenance plans that are probably already being reviewed in draft form by the peer review engineer. That basically identifies periodic maintenance requirements, reporting. Um so then those would be enforceable uh by the town. If all sudden they were demonstrated not to maintain. Very often when towns accept. Uh subdivision roads and and retention areas and it's it's the challenge. Um sometimes towns don't have the ability to maintain some of those retention areas uh with their existing staffs and sometimes they overgrow and then towns will go in a couple of years later and they kind of doubt. Here, because it is a private development, it would be up to the developer and also their maintenance company, i.e. whoever they hire to mow the grass. Um manage the site usually then is also contracted to do the seasonal maintenance within a detention area.
Does that help?
Is I can walk you to a retention pond that's not maintained. Who's responsible? That's what I'm asking.
Well, he just explained it to you. So.
No, so what I heard was really nobody.
No, the town is responsible for the ones that the town owns.
Alrighty.
The residents are responsible for the in in the.
So in in that case, the end of Laurel Lane is owned by a citizen and that he has to maintain it?
No, the the town can. Make so are you asking about a specific location or are you asking a general question?
Just a specific, just to show you that.
Okay, because there's so.
A lot of leeway and all the.
I mean, I don't know. I don't know how much, how far down this rabbit hole the chair wants to go. So before I go on a. To answer your question, I'm happy to do it offline or. Briefly now or we can move on. It's up to you.
Yeah, I think he needs an answer.
Okay, so the way I would the way I would say it, and this is a discussion, right? So we're not like, right? So. In the in the case that you're asking about, there is the town. If that if it if it was deemed necessary to maintain a. Retention basin or pond or whatever, the town has the. Right to go in and use their easement to go in and do whatever maintenance the town decides it needs to do. That's the the town has the choice to do that. The town's not obligated to that. Because the town has limited resources, limited taxpayer dollars. If we put together a budget for beautifully manicuring all of our retention basins. That exist around the town, it would cost us many millions of dollars, I'm sure, in order to go through all of those. The issue is if they're working. Then why do you need to cut down the trees? It's nicer to have it grow naturally. If if it's not working, the town has that easement so that they can go in, clear the trees, open it up and make sure that it's working as it's designed. A lot of these are way over engineered and way over built, which is why the town allows them. To grow up and not be maintained because it's a it's a functional piece of. Equipment, for lack of a better word. And as long as it's working, we don't need to make it look pretty. In fact, some would argue that it looks nicer when you let it grow naturally. Instead of cutting it and having riprap and rock there.
Who determines that it's working?
The DVW.
Isn't that part of the sound, I mean?
So 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 does that answer your question now? Okay, great.
So is the town liable if that retention pond fails and somebody downstream gets water? No.
Well, that's a different quote. So I'm very uncomfortable with liability questions. You asked a maintenance question. So a lawyer probably has to answer the liability question, but. It seems like is is there flooding that's happening that you're concerned about or you're hyp asking a hypothetical question now?
No, it's flooding that's happening.
Where?
Laurel Lane. Yeah, at the end of Laurel Lane.
Yeah.
That water runs over the old property through the riches.
So that has nothing to do with this this forty B development. That's a totally unrelated net new issue. No, I'm 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 clarifying. It's an example. Great. So for that specific example, if there's if there's town infrastructure that's not working. The town needs to be made aware of it and the town will decide, okay, how do we use our money to try to remediate this? If there's town infrastructure that's not working and causing damage to private property, then that needs to be a conversation. Need to figure that out and I don't know how that gets resolved, but you it has to be a conversation like, okay, there's a problem. We gotta solve it. Right? That's just how you sort of do stuff. And so I don't think there's anybody that would shy away from having that conversation with you to say, if there's a problem, let's work together and figure out how to solve it. Maybe the town can do something. Maybe citizens can do something. Maybe nothing can be done. Maybe there's liability. Maybe there is. Maybe there's an, I don't know, but that's a very specific example and we can have that conversation and we should work together to fix it.
We should be taken care of, right? These are gonna be on Kevin's property, on Sylvester's property.
That's right.
He'll be responsible for maintaining them.
That's.
But we won't be expecting.
I don't I don't know what you're saying. What do you mean?
I'm saying.
To make sure the work is done.
And that's that's where it ends up being really, and and this is where, you know, at least um. Michael's here to be able to understand the conversation to then check with the ZBA and the peer consultant when you're dealing with.
Isn't that part of the reporting?
I was I was through the chair. I was just gonna say that I was lagging this conversation for uh questions and not only. Peer review engineer, but also our um consulting attorney on this who I I know um has, you know, template decisions that. Through multiple communities. Yeah, I'm sure this isn't the first time questions come up.
Right.
And so there's likely template language that we can utilize in order to cover these concerns within within that.
So and I think I'm 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 as I'm processing, I'm kind of understanding more like ultimately, right? You you're sort of talking about retention basin maintenance. As a thing, but really that's not the core issue. The issue is if this is built and there's more flooding. How does that get resolved? Is that what you're saying? Right, because even even if one could argue these are maintained beautifully and they work and look beautiful. If there's flooding, you want recourse.
Yeah, you know.
Is that kind of what you're?
On sight, I wish the whole community had never said a prayer. Because I fear that when this is all said and done, something does happen. They're going to be able to say, well, you guys told us about this problem before we started, so this might be a pre-existing condition.
So I I think.
Well, I think we'll drop it there.
I think one of the.
Michael, if you can get some answers.
Yeah, I'll certainly discuss, uh like I said, the consulting attorney.
And we'll get some legal answers.
One thing I think would help is if the DPW had on their list of things to do is to just do an inspection. And say, this is overgrown, this is a problem, that way saying the 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 building is built, so they they don't maintain their. Ponds and so forth, then at least the town can notify them and say, we inspected this and we need to get something. Just like Laurel Lane, if they went through those big inspections, they could get it before it's a problem and flooding. If you see what I'm saying.
Yes.
If I make you pay inspection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. We said, I'm set, okay. Um select board sharing of funding affordable housing plan, missed that five thousand ago.
So I have the source for the five thousand, so I don't know if we really need it, it's coming out of. Selectors uh town manager expenses, I don't know if you want to have more of a conversation, I I can easily just pay our portion.
Well, we discussed it at the last meeting, right?
Right, last Affordable Housing Trust meeting, so define the source for then we can take care of our our half. It was in some ways a question to make sure that we actually had a half to take care of.
You got a motion?
I had it as discussion dependent because for me to pay the bill, I don't need the or our portion of the bill, I don't.
Okay.
I'll just go ahead.
Okay, I'll think. Uh Upton Men's Club funding request for the fireworks festival and planting areas.
Don't see. Anyone to hear from the men's club, but both these requests are sort of standard. Uh first one being the request for seventy five hundred dollars for the twenty twenty four Upton Fireworks Festival. Um it's currently scheduled for June twenty second uh twenty twenty four. And the second request is for five thousand dollars um from beautification funds to not only purchase materials and supplies. For maintenance of planters, but they also want to ex uh expand and take care of um planters and islands. Um at two new locations, one at the end of mechanic and one um at uh New Island on Hartford Avenue. Material from the.
No.
Men's Club Center.
No question.
Motion.
I moved that the board vote to approve the Upton Men's Club twenty twenty. Four, I think that's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's. Upton Fireworks Festival funding request for seven thousand five hundred to be expended out of the William Norton Trust Fund. Are we doing them separately?
I had him on separate.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Unanimous action.
I move that the board vote to approve the Upton Men's Club request for up to five thousand dollars for the purchase of materials and supplies. Supplies to support the beautification of Upton to be paid out of the town's beautification trust fund.
I second the motion, all those in favor? I unanimous action.
Did you see that delicate ballet of motioning we just did?
I know, weren't we just amazing? Especially this late at night.
Sorry.
Okay, discussion of burying utilities in Upton Center. This is lines that doesn't look like Hopkinton, but the dual telephone poles and the, what a mess. Ah, yes.
All the.
That everybody wants to drive.
We're gonna try to park up there.
Do you know, that's my, that is my biggest fear for this. And the roundabout, if we look like Hopkinton, they need to go find somebody else to pick on.
What are they gonna do?
We don't do that.
Well, see, they had too much though, why?
They had.
They didn't know what to do.
They didn't know.
And they they don't stop.
And give people their.
If you got an ambulance, a fire.
You can't get anywhere.
Alright, it's neither here nor there.
Okay.
And in the spirit of it's late and I want to be respectful of everybody's time, including the folks that are here to listen to this, um. We talked about this a little bit, I revisited it, I think. The conversation here, at least as a board, it's like, I think it's my view as an individual board member is that it's worth. Doing a little more work just to figure out and come up with a path. To let the town meeting decide and or vote on. Burying the overhead wires. That are in the town center. We would never do this, all else being equal, but we have a unique once in a hundred year opportunity to do that. Because we're going to be digging up the road, doing this tip project, they're going to be moving all the utilities anyway, they're reconfiguring everything. And it's like, okay, while the box is open, why don't we put everything back in the box?
Well, it didn't sound too promising tonight from Representative Meridian about getting really active on that tip project.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
But I don't know how that would affect whether or not we have this conversation.
Oh, we can have the conversation, but. The funding mechanism and all that.
I mean, I think it would probably be the town having to pay for it, I don't think the state is gonna, I mean. This is this, yeah, this 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 isn't about state funding or state budgets, this is about, do we? If it costs six million, A, the state might not even allow it, the state might just be like, a pound sand, no, you're not burying the utilities. It ain't gonna happen over my dead body, so that may be an obstacle. If they, if the state and the utility, if it was even allowable, it would only be at the town's dime. And so the question is, and that that was why I sort of let it go, because I'm like, it just doesn't make sense if you say to me. You have six million dollars to spend, you want to spend it burying util burying wires or fixing a roof on your school? I'm gonna fix the roof on the school. But I also believe that there's merit, because I've talked to a very small group of people, right? I can only talk to so many people, but I've talked to five or ten people and they're like. Oh, yeah, that seems like a really good idea, like it would look so much better, it would look really nice, we're trying to make a pedestrian friendly, walkable downtown. We've got a new community center, we've got a, we just, you know, just, we we did have a new town hall that looks beautiful. We're trying to fix these buildings, we're gonna have newly paved roads, we're gonna have sidewalks, it's kind of like, we're really investing in the aesthetic. And this is an opportunity to clean up the house and make the aesthetic and make the town center even more pedestrian friendly. More beautiful, more of a traditional New England town and we certainly. There, like, it's not a no brainer to do it, I don't think it is, but I just think it's about, maybe we ask the townspeople what they think, I don't know.
Well, what what's the distance, where are you coming, where are you starting and where are you ending?
We'd have to figure that out, right? I mean, because it's partly based on cost, right? So it's like, I I would love to bury all the wires in the world, but we can't do that. I would love to bury them all along Main Street, we can't do that, so as. As small, I mean, maybe that's part of it, is figuring out like, alright, where would we draw the lines? Because I was driving down by Gasco and I'm like, okay, where would we start there putting all this stuff underground? May be right, like, like clearly, like, right out in front of town hall, right out, whether we would do in front of the community center, I don't know. I'm thinking at least in front of town hall, in front of the church, like where the like, this immediate town common town center area. Would sort of be the like, if we're gonna do it, we would at least do that. And then however much it costs, I don't know how, like, if it's gonna cost a million dollars to go another ten feet, well, we're gonna stop. But if it's a little bit to go down across the street in front of the community center. And a little bit further up to the super, great, like, so I I don't know the answer to that question at all. Because I don't know how much any of this would cost or if it's even worth it, my only suggestion is finding out about what it might cost to do some of this. So that we know how ridiculous the conversation is or not.
I was involved in Hockenham back in. Before two thousand fifteen, when they thought about burying the utilities.
On that project, they did.
From the Korean church.
Yeah.
To um the lights.
Yeah.
And it was three million dollars.
Yep.
For the town to pay.
Yep.
And the rest was borne by the rate payers, that's how they got the project done.
Okay.
Which is a lot, and plus that didn't start until what, a year and a half ago? About.
Well, this.
So I'm I'm assuming that it's probably upwards of six million dollars on the town.
Yeah, I mean, I would say it's in my brain, in my brain, yeah, three to six million dollars, I don't know what the number would be, but yeah, it's it's not cheap.
No, I that's not the full price, you have, I don't think.
Yeah.
Because then they put the balance of it on the rate payers because they're moving all the electrical and.
Yeah.
Rising and all that stuff.
Ah, totally, yeah, I'd love to know.
It's a lot of money.
Yes, yeah.
Oh.
It's a lot of money, there's no doubt.
Mr. Westgate, what do you think? Huh?
He he he.
He's got his music, he's not.
He's like, no way.
He's like.
He's like, Marines are no, Breton yes, and Lawrence just wants a number, like, I don't know.
Honestly, I don't think we can make an intelligent decision till we have it. I mean, what if they come back at twenty million?
Oh, bingo. Exactly.
Ah, that that. Hey, Paul, that middle school might get built in your lifetime if they come back at twenty million.
And the the other, the other thing, so it's not just the cost, like clearly having a better sense of the cost is, it would help us, right? Because if it's, if it's three million dollars, maybe, if it's six million dollars, ah, if it's more than like, when you start getting north of that, it's like. I couldn't even in good conscience, let it go to town meeting vote, because I it's just like, seems silly to even ask the question.
Oh, it's getting them to do it too, how long those two poles gonna be there?
That 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 was the other thing is, I also, the other, so there's cost, there's obviously, would the state even like, go for it? But then the other thing is like, we don't want it to last, right, ten years, we don't, we don't want to build, we don't want to, we don't want to delay the project. Because it's gonna be hard anyway, so anyway. So there's a few factors to get more information, so we could get more data to answer the question, that's really, I think, where I'm at, is like. Is it worth us at least getting that more information so we can form a more data informed decision?
I would please give us a five.
I would think if somebody could give us a ballpark and then we can make an intelligent decision.
What do you think, Mr. Westgate?
I'm sorry, I was on earlier, but my battery died on my laptop, so I had to hunt down my cord. Um, uh, there's a lot, there's a lot to it to discover, I think, for you to make an intelligent decision. Or offer an intelligent advice to the taxpayers. And a lot of that would have to do with the logistics of getting it across the two bridges, because I would think that eventually. The goal would be to get them across the bridges and we would probably want to do that before the bridges are replaced, not after. So there's considerations when we, when you talk about the boundaries, where you're going from where to where, that's an important part of the discussion. Um it's also going to cost a little bit to get a price, um because there's a lot to consider, it's. If you're building a building or something of that nature, this, it's, they have construction costs and books that they use to give you rough estimates. And I'm sure we can get a rough estimate from a number of different um um. Contractors, but the problem is going to be, there's a lot of unknown and there's gonna be a lot of research to gather up. Where exactly in the road uh the conduits could go, because it's a busy street, there's gas, there's water, there's sewer. Um, there's fiber, I know that, I found that out the hard way as we were doing the um Grove Street Bridge. We discovered we had to move a bank of fiber to make that work. So there's an, it's, like I said, it's a very busy road to begin with, so finding out the logistics of where it would have to go would be part of that. Discovery of determining the price, so it would be a little more involved than a ballpark and that's gonna cost a couple of dollars.
Yeah, right.
Wait, can you hear this? I think what Dennis is saying, we need appropriation at a town meeting for that dollar amount to then.
Yeah, I mean, you you would.
That's probably a better approach.
And then you gotta go over an I R P and all that stuff.
Thank you.
Um, if we do this for studies, we also have the small cell towers that would have to replace the telephone poles. So we would want to know what that, so to.
What?
Well, the small cell.
But those, they have to get approval from the state.
Are they there now?
No, but they're planned, so if you don't have.
What do you mean they're planned?
Uh, the five chain.
For for the tip project?
No, she's talking about the wi, the small wireless.
Yes.
Well, if we bury all the poles, then they can't put them up, because there's no poles to put them on.
Right.
Because it's a state highways.
Then they have done, the state would be putting poles back in, wouldn't be just. I don't, I don't see that.
No, they wouldn't do that, they wouldn't do that.
We done with that discussion?
Well, I think the conclusion sounds like, do we want to put a warrant article on the warrant to do? To fund the research and discovery.
I mean. You gotta, well, you gotta come up with a cost, he's gotta get an estimate, they gotta send out an I R P. How much? I hate to put that.
Sorry. Then. At least for engineering services, we wouldn't have, we could do whatever we wanted, but we can also just work with an engineer. I'm meeting with one to get a sense of um what a feasibility study would be to look at that.
Well.
So that, you know, it could be seventy five thousand, um but. Meeting with um an engineering firm just to get um a ballpark on how to develop. A better ballpark for the larger.
Yeah.
Um, because, you know, we could say, okay, well, town meeting is, you know, ask fifty thousand to to start to engage engineering services to evaluate this. Um, that may only get you so far and it may not be enough, so want to get an idea as far as if we're looking seriously at feasibility. Not designing it, but just to look at and and understand what would that cost me, so I'm working to pull together that, so. At least then can um work with the board on. And discussing what a dollar amount could be for just some consulting services.
So we could bring that up, you would have a better idea April second?
Yeah.
So we should let this drop tonight and discuss it on April second to see if it's even feasible?
Yeah, and I'd be providing you a base sort of along the way, so.
I'd like to get, yeah, get to meet with that engineer.
Yeah.
Find out what the next engineer is gonna charge you. Yeah.
Yeah.
So hold on, you want to meet with an engineer?
I don't.
Oh, I thought you said you. Oh, I thought you said I want to meet with that engineer, I was like, what, I'm meeting with engineer now? No, okay, so to summarize. We're at least okay with Joe spending some time putting together a. Here's what it would cost to do some sort of feasibility study to figure out the actual project, right? Because it's sort of like, we'd be stepping into this, so the main thing we're asking is, are we willing to spend a little bit of Joe's time? To get a number that we could potentially bring to town meeting floor to vote to do the feasibility? We're not deciding whether or not we would include it in the warrant, we're just right now deciding that Joe should go and spend some time doing that. He'll come back, he'll come back to the next meeting with a, hey, it's thirty thousand, hey, it's seventy five thousand, do you want to put that on the warrant? And I'll also, here's the other information I got. Is that okay?
Yep, works for me.
No commitments, other than that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, approval of meeting minutes. I, well, I have. I went through them and I tried to go back and watch the videos for each one of the, they're not there.
The only one that's not there is the December event.
And January second wasn't there?
No, I I I did the minutes for January second off of the video, so I.
Tried to get in on the UCTV. And then it goes to January, it comes up January sixteenth first.
There must be.
You're watching the videos to validate the minutes?
You betcha, it goes back far enough, can you remember everything you said back in November?
I do not ever want minutes that reflect everything I said, that would be a nice.
Well, I do.
Especially tonight.
I'm not quoting minutes that I don't know anything about.
The January second, I watched the video because like you. The January second, I watched the video because like you.
Had it in your email, so I went to the January second.
So we're not gonna vote, so are there any minutes that you are open to voting on tonight?
No.
No, okay, great.
Question is that the board did vote, and I saw it by watching the January second meeting minutes, I mean, meeting. The board did vote on January second to approve November fourteenth and December third as amended during. So we have that vote, so it's just a question whether or not the board wants to.
Videos. From the first of November to present.
Great.
Because they're not there.
We can find them, we'll get you the videos.
No, you will, because Paul couldn't get them for me.
No, the the December fifth is the only one, and I know because.
The videos go, they don't disappear.
How did you get the minutes if you didn't have the video?
If I.
Yeah, we can tell you they do, yeah, we tried looking at videos, they're not there.
They're not there.
And Paul couldn't find.
They're not on the website.
No, they're not.
Where do they go?
The ether. Premlins eat them.
Nope, they don't, there are no internet premlins, so there's there's faulty software.
I'm not trying to sort of belabor the point, January second, that's the minutes, that's the meeting.
Why I went to the same, did you go?
Playlists, so you go to YouTube. You go to playlists, you pull up the board name, and they're they're there, the only one that's missing. Um, is December fifth. And those I know because um I was rushing back from end to nothing. Came flying in here, we started the meeting, didn't even think about hitting record. From there, from there learned Denise can set it up to automatically record, and that's what they do after that.
Can I just make a note, well, November fourteenth is it's still adjourned. Laura had have voted to adjourn the October seventeenth meeting, that's at the end of the November fourteenth meeting. So there's still some type of, can you just?
Oh, you were gonna give me your handwritten notes for the fourteenth too.
Yeah, pull them up, could we just do like, okay, these are all of our minutes, so for example, on this date, we approved these. Because I am totally lost, it's been like six months.
The the email that I just sent today.
The master list, because I feel like eight emails.
I sent the email with the.
With the list of that, did you see it?
Yeah, some of it, but you know, when you start sending me stuff like an hour or two, I it it's. Like four o'clock is when my work starts, so.
So it's it's.
It's I probably missed some of that.
Yeah, so there there is a list of here are the meetings, here are the minutes. For those meetings and whether they're approved or not, and here's what we have to approve, so he did that already and.
Okay, I was just like, if I could, cause I know.
It made it a lot easier, cause we.
No, they are, those have been done, they're.
There was no comments for me to put. And for the workshop.
Cause this is just like a lot of swirl, so can we like be specific and give Joe direction, cause. Clearly bored frustration.
Website. My my issue is, I just wanna know.
With the website.
So for example, maybe on these. Maybe I wanna know like on December fifth, we approved September ninth, tenth and eleventh. On January first, we approved these, just so that I can go back and check that we, where we are at. So I'm not watching, because I couple of times, like I saw one of your notes that said Laura has the handwritten things, and I was like, did I get them to him? And apparently I didn't, so let's let's just, if you can just make a list like that, like, okay. On this date, we approved these, on this date, we approved these, on this date, we passed over these. Do you see what I'm saying? I, cause I don't know where the hell we are with our meetings.
Problem are you trying to solve?
I just wanna see. Minutes, not, uh, what are we into, five months? I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Before minutes.
The the citizens should have minutes to all meetings within like one meeting. It's there, we should we should never be in this situation.
I went into. The minutes.
They should.
Meeting minutes of twenty twenty three.
Sorry.
The only thing I could come up with is prior to twenty twenty three, which it was.
Yes.
Twenty twenty two.
Right now, when you look on the town's website, um, the last set of minutes was the end of September. Uh, Kathleen uploaded a set of six, and I don't know why they're not showing. Those I'll be confirming.
That's for you.
With her tomorrow, where the minutes are through November second. The November fourteenth happened before the the board for couple meetings, same with the December fifth. The Kevin Lobeser was approved back in September, that's been on the website for a while. Um, and there's.
Does that couple little?
Including tonight, um, there's or excluding tonight, there's only four sets of regular meeting minutes. That are then missing um and haven't been done. We have senior tax workoff that is uh working on the second February set. And once she's done, she's gonna start on the March ones, so we're doing pretty good. On getting those done.
There's 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 several issues here.
Yes, there is.
So at some point, we should create maybe an agenda item, or like, I don't know when we wanna talk about it, I I don't care. My kids are all in bed, so I'm happy to stay here till midnight figuring this out now, tonight with all of you. That being said, we could, right, cause it's like, there's the technology problems, right? Like, if we're gonna record meetings, they should be available to the public, dependent on YouTube to some extent to how they operate and work. There's our website design, which leaves a lot to be desired, because for example, people can't find information that they're looking for for these minutes. So that's a website design issue, there's the fact that there are minutes that are published, approved. And aren't posted to the website, so that's a separate process problem. There are issues that the minutes that are produced and created aren't of a sufficient quality to reflect the discussion and dialogue and details. That would be considered standard by people who evaluate these types of things, minutes are like literally write everything down, so it's like. How we actually take the minutes, how we publish the minutes, how we post them, like, the whole purpose of, in my opinion. One of the primary functions of meeting minutes is so that people that aren't at the meeting. Can have a record and see what was discussed at the meeting. We do our town and our citizens a gross disservice.
Yes, we do.
By making it so challenging to find minutes, to read minutes, or to get minutes. That reflect a sufficient level of detail that you can understand what was discussed at the meeting and what was happening at the meeting. All of those things are deficits and opportunities for us to get better. Clearly not gonna solve those now, but if we're going to solve them, we need to articulate all of them clearly and come up with a plan for each of them specifically.
Right, my my question was if if we could, you know, we're so far behind. I just wanna make sure we haven't missed anything, and then in looking at some of the minutes, I had a question of. I don't know if this is right, so to go back to the recordings helps.
Yes.
But also to know, we have, you know, so we thought we were caught up, and then there were four other dates that were not caught up. I just wanted to kind of like a check and a balance, cause you know me, I love the belt and suspenders. So if we have a list of, okay, we've been behind since the end of October. So here's all the list of our meetings, and here's all of the things we approved, just to make sure, a master list to make sure we didn't miss anything. That was my concern, I don't wanna find out three years from now, we missed a meeting. So I know we've done it piecemeal, I just wanna see for my own eyes that everything has been done correctly.
So I can pull that together, um. The outstanding minutes are exactly Hermione Melon, we have four staff regulars minutes. Um, the board has um four tonight as well, including. Um, the January second, which I did do, um, the February sixth, um, that were also done. Um, and the February sixteenth. Uh, so. From staff's perspective, can absolutely put together a grid that then identifies their status, because. When I get an email from the town clerk's office saying that they uploaded four sets of meeting minutes, and then at five o'clock. They're still not there, then that's something I need to follow up with. So staff is working on it. Um, and um, you know, I think also there's been a lot of improvements. The the website is consistently and constantly being upgraded. Um, and I would ask that if people have problems, they let me know, because then I can focus and attention on that. Um, it is vastly different and better than where it was a month ago.
We need all the executive session.
And those are in all the time, because that's all on me. I'm working the best I can on that, while I'm also doing a whole bunch of other stuff.
And we've had some extra special executive session frequency as of late, so.
I, like I said, I just wanna make sure that we don't skip something, cause.
I think you'll find that we haven't.
Uh, probably not, you know.
It's gonna be easy, okay, great, this shows it all, and that we're we're really not behind.
And and we can also separately as a board agree, like, right? What is our standard of service for the community, right, like? We shouldn't, it doesn't matter how we got, it's no, I'm not blame, there's no fault here, right? Going going forward, right? My view of meeting minutes is like, if we have a meeting tonight, at our next meeting, we approve the minutes. And they're on the website the day after we approve the minutes.
I agree, agree.
Especially that's how life works, like, meeting minutes are, you have a meeting, you write minutes, you publish the minutes.
Right.
Minutes six months later are, you, minutes immediately are barely useful to only a very small fraction of the people. Need minutes for meetings six months ago are completely and utterly devoid of value in most cases. So we have a meeting, the next meeting, we have minutes approved. They get published the morning after that meeting, and they're on the website, so for every one of our boards and committees, if you go to their website. There should be a list of that grid exactly as you described it, it's, we have this minutes and agendas thing on the website. And it's a bunch of gobbledygook, I don't know, I I can't find.
Uh, agenda, that's it.
I can't, right, so where are the minutes, and and it's not us, we don't control all boards, we get that. It's just an example of setting a standard, setting a performance expectation and meeting it.
So and I think that's uh a good goal, I think. Um, one of the main things is we have to make sure that then we have staff that is. Um, able to do that, I know out of my office, until the executive position is hopefully been filled, that will be a challenge.
Struggle, hundred percent.
Senior tax workoff and other staff.
Which was a great idea, by the way, I saw that, I was like, that's a good call.
Can absolutely get it as as soon as as possible.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if not for the first, but the second, until we have someone that then is able to do the minutes right during the meeting. And then constant getting that done, and then it becomes a question as far as if that's the board's expectation, to what extent it gets communicated out to other boards. But then also have challenges with uh getting meeting minutes uh up on.
I can't believe it should have that.
Oh, it's.
Oh, no, no, it's absolutely.
There are, there are some words that like, I mean, even the agendas, you look at the agendas and it's like, I don't know if people are trying to be secret about. I mean, they're not, I shouldn't say that, I know better, no one's trying to be secretive, people are busy. They're trying to be efficient, they're trying to save time, it's work, it's time, it's effort, and everybody is capacity constrained. So let's give them all positive attribution, but know that we can do better as a town, yes. For myself, that.
All right, we will be going into executive session.
Not the rest of your morning.
You never knew they were this such fun, weren't you? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
He's gotta stay. Technology. It's only great when it works, I've said multiple times, I wish computers had ears, so when I'm sparring it, they knew. You know, that little thing up above is the most annoying thing, I see the second screen.
Yeah.
Watch, it's gonna just attack us in a half a second. We have no clue, but it's relatively recent, and it's the most distracting thing. If somebody's sitting there and then all of a sudden it decides to go into a.
Yeah, would you W P I?
What's that?
You can't across the street with. Get three shirts, say anything.
Yeah, my my oldest wants to go to.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
I got a ton of the Ohio State here. Can get it all for free.
There could be Mr. Radley.
Good night, Mr. Eric. A good night. Go see in the.
Where?
Oh.
So, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to read the the motion.
Oh, yeah. And we can turn off the recording?
Yes.
Bear with me, I will get. Is it in the packet?
Yes.
I'm getting there.
Yep.
What are we looking?
Here we go, I move that the select board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General law, chapter thirty A, section twenty one three. Respect to collective bargaining, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And the chair so declares, police local one sixty two, firefighters local fifty one sixty six, D P W Teamsters local one seventy, roll call vote.
I second the motion.
Brett Simon's eye.
Laura have I.
Roll call vote.
I said Brett Simon's eye.
I didn't hear Brett Simon's.
Uh, Laura have I.
Maureen Gummel, I.
So everybody's read the new contract. Yes. I have no questions. I will entertain a motion. But have that it.
Number nine.
The next one, I'm on page ninety one.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry, it's been. Um, uh, I meant to like put a dad in there, um, uh, moves at the uh. The board uh both technically the contract with local one sixty, now just only in the police. Effective July first, twenty twenty four, through June thirty and twenty twenty seven.
Do you get all that, so moved?
Oh, yeah, it's recorded, so what you just said is the motions.
I so moved, so second.
I seconded that motion.
There we go, all favor.
Aye.
Unanimous action.
Alright.
What? So moved.
So.
When I tripped all over my tongue last week.
I get, I'm getting better at this every day.
What do you know?
I think we're getting crazy.
I make a motion to adjourn our meeting at ten twenty two.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous act.